Roberta, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Long. Supervisor Foy. Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Yes.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here, thank you. And this morning, we're honored to have Harriet Wixel, Disabilities Ministries, to give us our, we call it, the moment of affirmation. Good morning, thank you for coming.
Good morning. It's always so good to be here. You always put me in a place that I need to be. You get my mind and my heart connected, thank you. I did it again. I spent several hours last night praying and putting this formal thing together. And I walked in here, and I decided, that's not what I'm supposed to tell them. We've gone through this, how many times? This has been a very, very difficult year for me. At the beginning of the year, my brother was found dead. He had been dead for five days. He was sitting in front of his ham radio when they found him. And it was really traumatic. He'd been locked in that house alone. Later in the year, my youngest son was on his motorcycle with nine other riders here in the county. And they were taking a Sunday drive, and he was hit by a driver that was out of control. There were nine motorcycles in a row. My son was about the third back. When the impact of the car hit him, he and his bike went straight up in the air. He didn't have a chance. In December, my brother-in-law, who is a war hero of World War II, Korea, and a lot of other things, he's 14 medals, the Purple Heart, all of it, died. He died a long, slow, lingering death from cancer. That was Christmas. I really went into a depression. I understand God, I know the walk that I have, I know what I'm supposed to be doing. But I lost direction, I really got confused. I started doubting myself. I went into a depression. And I received a call from ARC. I have a dear friend in the Sheriff's Department, Deputy Albert Garibay. And every year, for years now, he's dressed up like Santa Claus, and he's gone out, and he's Santa to people with developmental disabilities, people with autism, retardation, Down Syndrome. And he called me, and he said, Mama, I want you to be there. Well, I wasn't going anywhere at that time, I was hiding in my house. But it was Albert. I can't say no to Albert. I went, but I made sure that I would be getting there late, so that I could slip in, and nobody would see me, and then I could slip out. I walked in, and a young woman, probably in her early 30s, came running up to me, reached out, grabbed me, and said, Welcome home, we've missed you, Mama. And I knew, at that moment, that I was walking in the right direction, that what I was doing was what God wanted me to do. I knew that when they found my brother dead in front of that ham radio, that he was serving the population that he loved. He was talking to the truckers, he was making sure that if there was a motorist in distress, that somebody would get to them, he was serving. I knew when my son was killed, I knew because the bikers told me. They said, if Mike hadn't taken the blow, everyone behind him would have gone down too. He stood his ground and took the ride. He knew the risks that were involved with that bike. The third one, Ed, he was my hero in so many ways. He was honorary, he was cantankerous, he was opinionated, but he stood his ground and he fought. And I knew that what God was saying to me was, Serve like your brother. Give yourself like your son, and fight like your brother-in-law. And I'm still trying, and it's a little bit shaky, but I'm trying. And my one hope is that one day, I know there's a heaven, I know that I'll see my loved ones again, I know they'll be standing with God, and I just hope he says, Welcome home, Mom, you did a good job, and I hope there's hugs. I want to encourage you. If there are times when you're doing this, when you're serving, and you feel like you're being beaten, when there are times when you feel like you're overwhelmed, and there's nothing left to give, when there's times when you feel like it's a battle more than it is anything else, stop, stop. Put your hand here, right now. Go ahead, put your hand here, and feel that little heartbeat in there. You're alive. We're alive. You were created to serve and to service community, and you're doing it. Regardless of the speed bumps in the road, you're making a difference, a tremendous difference. Never give up, never lose heart. If you get shaky, call me. I'll be here, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wixel. At this time, Supervisor Flynn, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Join me in the pledge, right again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for its strength, for one nation, unuttered, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we have minutes before us of January 19th and February 6th. Excuse me, these are minutes of 14 and 21st of November, and we have a motion and a second. See, no objections, and that passes. Our next item on the agenda is Agenda Review.
Madam Chair, members of the board. This morning, we have a number of changes. I guess, getting started in the new year, we have a lot of issues and appointments and a variety of things that have required that we make some corrections here. Item number 11 has a revised board letter and attachment. That's right, well, hitting the ground running, John. Item 37 is to be removed from the agenda. Okay, 11 has a revised board letter and a detachment which you received. Yes, item 37 is being removed from the agenda. Item 38, there's a revised board letter, and there's a change in the recommendation, the request of the Auditor's Office, it should read alterations and improvements as opposed to capital improvements. Item 39 has a revised page on a contract, and the agenda title only, it does not require a four-fifths vote. Majority will do, does not. Item number 43, to continue the appointment of Thomas Rich to February 6th. Item 44, revised board letter. And item 55 is an addendum to the agenda. I'll give the notes to the chair. On item 37, I would like to comment, that is the study session that we had scheduled. When the composition of the board changes, we try to do a study session on the way in which pension plans operate, and to give kind of a general review for the public. We have had the services of Paul Angelo in the past, and he is reputed to be the best. Unfortunately, when you're the best, he got called away to Washington, D.C., so we are rescheduling that for March 6th. Yeah, possibly. So, anyway, that will be rescheduled for the first week in March.
That is a lot of changes. At this point, do supervisors have any requested changes? That is a lot of changes. At this point, do Supervisors have any requested changes to the agenda? See none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as revised? We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as revised, and see no objections, and that passes. The next item on our agenda is our consent items, and these are items 12 through Okay, we have a motion and then a second for items 12 through 26. Okay, and I would just, okay, so 12 through 26 plus item 55 is part of the motion of the consent agenda items. And I do have a comment to make on 23, but it doesn't need to stop the vote. So if there's no objections on the consent agenda, see none, then that is also approved unanimously. And my only comment was on item 23, and this regards Malibu Creek TMDLs. And this is a cost-sharing agreement that we have with the other cities and the County of Los Angeles for the watershed in the Malibu Canyon. And the way they've allocated the costs for it, instead of based on the amount of development in the area and who's got the most development, which is contributing to the TMDLs, they have, in this study, decided to allocate it by land mass. And when we have areas in that portion of the watershed, such as Almondson Ranch, a lot of open space area, since it's done by the amount of land, we are ending up, I think, paying too much. But as I've spoken with staff, this is something that isn't as extensive as what will happen when it comes time to actually pay for the cleanup, and I've been assured that we can go back and renegotiate that cost-sharing agreement. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know, for example, the city of Agoura Hills had this discussion. They found the type of allocation also outrageous, the way that it was done. That's a quote. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That will be something I will have to keep on our radar because that can be pretty expensive when we start talking about cleaning up creeks. All right, moving on then. That was the consent agenda. Our next item on the agenda is item eight, and this is an oral presentation by Agriculture Commissioner and Ventura County Sheriff's Department regarding the damages due to the frost. And I see that we do have our sheriff here. Sheriff Brooks, welcome. We missed you at the swearing-in.
Thank you. I heard it still took, but I'm sorry I couldn't have been here. Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson. This morning, on the way to work, I drove through the Santa Rosa Valley and along the 118 from Simi all the way to Ventura, and it was just devastating to see hills and orchards. As far as you could see, they were damaged by the freeze. Many of these same farmers recently incurred losses in the fires. What didn't burn now has frozen, and it's really been a blow to their private businesses, but also to the economy of Ventura County. So in keeping with that, I am asking that your board ratify the proclamation of local emergency that I signed on January 16th. The copy that's attached to your agenda will be forwarded to the Governor. The Governor's already made three proclamations, but we're hoping for a presidential declaration of major disaster for federal assistance so that we can open the door both to residents and for workers in the area to receive relief, both on the federal and state level. Earl McPhail, our ag commissioner, is here with us this morning, and I asked him to give a detailed breakdown of the damage.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. McPhail.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. Roberta's handing out our latest revised estimate of damage. It's quite extensive, as you will see, but late last night, when I woke up, I thought I'd better put some things in perspective because the dollars have surpassed the $19.90. And at the bottom, underneath preliminary estimates, I put down 1990 acres in crops compared to 2005 because that's our last crop report. As you'll notice, there's a significant change in oranges. Acreage went down, of course, but in strawberries, you'll see a significant increase from 1990 to 205, 4,200 acres compared to 11,333 acres. And in 1990, we didn't even have raspberries and blueberries, and those are very high cash crops. And nursery stock, we have two-thirds more nursery stock now than we had in 1990. So when you add all that up, and probably $19.90 compared to $207, whatever that may be, we're up to $280,995,000 in damage. The dollar figure is much higher than 1990, but the freeze was basically in the same areas that we had in 1990, but we have a lot different and much higher cash crops involved than we had in 1990. So that's one of the reasons for the big difference. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Supervisor Foye, and then Supervisor Flynn.
I appreciate this is devastating to these farmers, these business owners. I know that. This number here equals just the crop loss, right?
Right. This has nothing to do with the human effects of the freeze, with people unemployed now and things like that. And the University of California has a multiplier effect of about $3.50, so if you add that in, we're talking about three-quarters of a billion dollars lost in the total economy to the county.
Just the county alone?
Just the county alone. Statewide, we're talking probably about a billion-two, billion-three total loss without the multiplier effect, just the loss of agricultural commodities.
When we look at that billion, almost three-quarters of a billion dollars, besides the devastation to the people who aren't going to be working and all the demands that are going to put on the county and cities and everything else, do we have an understanding of what that number is for us?
Right now, normally, this time of year, we're just getting into our heavy harvest season. We probably had anywhere between 22,000 and 25,000 farm workers out there and truck drivers that picked the stuff up and delivered to the packing houses and that sort of thing. Probably a minimum of half of those are out of work right now and will not be going back to work for a minimum of five to six weeks, as long as three to four months, especially the lemons and the avocados and oranges. The lemons in some areas took a real big hit along with the avocados. There'll be crews in there, cutting out and pruning the deadwood, but there won't be any crop on those trees for '07, obviously, and most likely not '08 either. So this freeze was exceptionally devastating, not only to the growers, but for the people who work.
We're not only talking about people picking, we're talking about cardboard boxes being truckers. We're talking about packing, everything.
Right.
Do we have, I don't know if the sheriff answered that, is, I hate to bring it this way, but are we going to see a denigration of issues with crime and everything else? People aren't working. I mean, do we have any other things that we need to be looking at? More proactive? I know it's kind of rare this happens. 1990 was the last time.
I think we need to be really proactive in the aspect that, you know, everybody knows we have a lot of undocumented workers, not only here in Ventura County, but throughout the state of California. I know that Senator Feinstein has introduced a bill with a couple of other people that hopefully will help take care of that problem as time goes on. But the problem that we're going to have as far as giving the undocumented workers help is that they won't go into one-stop centers because they're going to be afraid they're going to be picked up and deported or whatever. We need to figure out how to get money to nonprofits, churches, whatever, to help these people out because even in five to six weeks, when the berries start to come back in full production, we may not have those people available because they may have gone someplace else to find work, and that's our concern. They need help yesterday, not tomorrow. And I'll let the sheriff answer the rest of your question.
There's no clear answer to that. We have not seen, as a matter of prior experience, although we haven't had anything of this magnitude, that there's a spike in crime as a result of that kind of temporary unemployment. Many of these people move with the work availability, if they're in agriculture anyway, and so they're going to try to look for displacement, and if they can't find displacement, they're going to rely on social services locally. And there's very little you can do to anticipate or even deal with the potential of petty thefts and things that you may have. If there's economic need, we'd rather work with other agencies and private organizations to make sure the needs are taken care of.
Right, great, thank you.
Good questions. Supervisor Flynn and Supervisor Long?
Thank you. This issue really sheds some light on the labor issue we have in California and the whole state of California as far as agricultural workers are concerned. It's in addition to the loss of money, it's the biggest issue that farmers face today. And in looking at my own district, when you go into, and I mentioned this, but I want to mention it again, when you go into the old industrial area of Oxnard where all the packing plants are, frozen food plants and so forth, at any one time, you could see 150 of these huge trucks, huge trucks, coming in and out and hauling stuff away. The last, since the big storm, the wind knocked the fruit off and the strawberries and so forth, you hardly see any trucks. So it sheds light on the fact that we need to bring order to the agricultural labor market. There's no order to it. People who are in the country in California, there's estimates like 80% of the farmworkers, from 60 to 80% of the farm, 60% of the farmworkers are without documentation. So where do they go? They go in the shadows. That was a word that Senator Dianne Feinstein used. They go into the shadows, you don't know where they are. And they're afraid to come out. They're afraid to come out. Why? They're in the country without documentation. So this should increase the need to have some kind of order. I know it's a controversial subject, right? It's real controversial, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't face it head-on. And at some time, when things seem to shape up, we, as a board in an agricultural county, need to take a position on the issue. Here, Dianne Feinstein probably made the best statements I've heard as far as identifying the problem. And I called her and luckily was able to talk with her and tell her that. She thinks that we're going to move ahead. She asked me to call two senators, one and perhaps the board could make contact with the Majority Leader, Reed, and also Senator Leahy. Those are two prime people that need to be, where we need to emphasize, need to bring some order to the market. Oxnard, more than any other place in the county, will suffer from this issue. So we have, at this point in time, we have to bring the human factor, the moral factor here. Whether they're in the country illegally or without documentation or not, they're still human beings, so they face a big issue. For me, it's a moral issue. And it's going to be an issue, we're going to be not responsible if we continue the way we're doing things in this country as far as agricultural labor is concerned, and perhaps other labor too. We've got to come to focus in on it and say, "This is what we're going to do." And this is what we're going to do. It's the big question, but it's finally getting some kind of focus here. So I hope that we'll work on that together. We need to work with the Farm Bureau. We need to work with Rob Roy. We need to work with the UFW. We need to work with all of those that have some kind of role that they play in this issue.
Now, these kind of incidences, bring those things to a head, and perhaps inside the Beltway, they're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully.
Thank you. I know Supervisor Long has some comments. Would you then move those microphones pointed up? I think that might help. Thank you. Supervisor Long?
It's because you're so tall, Earl. One, thank you.
They're kind of scary, I mean.
I know that you and your team have been aggressively out there, talking to the growers, trying to work on getting sound assessments as quickly as possible. I appreciate, and that the sheriff that you moved to get the declaration declared, get it up to the Governor. I would hope that we follow up with letters of support for the Governor, asking for the federal designation because obviously that's very important. Numerous articles in the paper have called out, as Supervisor Foye mentioned, the other impacts that happen around just the actual crop loss, but also the workers, the farmers, the insurance issues. Article in the paper today about expedite insurance evaluators coming into the state was looking at Fresno specifically, but to help with the assessment and, of course, helping the growers to get back on their feet. One of the things that, in addition to making sure that we're on track with the Governor and sending a letter forward then to the President for the declaration, also working with Human Services Agency. I appreciate what you said, that typically some of the workers won't come into a job and career center. I know that we already have declared one open, the West Oxnard Job and Career Center, and I think the Santa Clara Valley. But I know our Human Services Agency folks are very creative and will find ways to get out to the community, to reach these folks through the nonprofits, and we must do that so that they don't end up in the river bottom. Or up in Monterey, and we won't be able to get them back for the crops when they're ready to, you know, to really be healthy again. It's my understanding that the freeze hit hardest at the east end of the county, from probably Santa Paula East all the way through that Santa Clara Valley, obviously up in Ojai, severe freeze took place. So I would hope that the coordinated efforts with the Job and Career Centers and Human Services Agency reaches out to those communities specifically also. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I talked with our assessor, and this board has a policy, and I know that he is ready to move on it to activate the application for reassessment for property damaged by the misfortune, i.e. this freeze. So that will help also.
Yeah, we have been working with them, and as we get damage assessment in from particular individuals, we will be forwarding those names and phone numbers to the assessor's office also.
Great, great. And the more, if it's needed to, community meetings, I know the Ag Association has called for one. We'll be participating. I really appreciate the leadership that we've had from Assemblyman Nava's office, from Senator Feinstein's office, and Boxer's office. They've all called and met and held meetings, and will follow through with this, and they'll be a great assistance to us with what we need in the response to this. You know, I pulled off of the Internet an article about the propane shortage, another one of those things that have impacted, and trying to be ready to respond to this freeze, seeing it coming, and there's been a shortage of propane, where they've actually had to go to Canada and out of country to bring propane in to help the farmers. So these little things that make such a difference in that industry are so important that wherever we can help, we should be ready to and willing to and step forward to do so. But thank you for your excellent work.
That's what we're here for. And I just want to thank the sheriff, and especially under Sheriff Husbands and Laura Hernandez. They jumped on it right away. Laura was emailing me and calling me and saying, "Do we need a letter?" And yes, we need a letter. And they jumped on it right away last week, and we really appreciate that, and I just want to personally thank them for that.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bennett has?
Yeah, Mr. McPhail and Sheriff Brooks, thank you for the report and getting this emergency declaration. And I would just want to ditto everything that's already been said about. We've had, in situations in the past, where the Governor hasn't moved as fast. We want to make sure that the Governor moves fast. And in terms of social services for all of those people that are being displaced, the one specific thing that came up in talking to a number of the growers in my district, they were, some of them were curious about, could they get technical assistance to help them evaluate whether their crop was in fact damaged or not, those people that were on the edge. And so my office is going to be contacting you to try to find out what are the best ways to get them the proper information.
Normally, what we do is, when things kind of settle down a little bit, I'll send staff out, and they'll just hit various orchards and cut fruit and see what it looks like. So we can do that if they so desire. I would prefer to hold that off until we get through this week because this week has been a real, last week and this week's been a real heavy workload for us. But anytime after this week, we can provide that service to go out and cut fruit and show them what we're looking for and approximately how much damage they may have. We can do that.
That would be a big help for them. And then I guess I would just share in talking with those growers, their sense of weariness. They just talked about, you know, you can battle the battle one night and battle the battle two nights. You get to that fourth night, they just talk about the fatigue level just kicking in and just a sense of, how much longer can you do that? None of them were complaining. They all said, "We know Mother Nature is, you know, is both our partner and our foe from time to time and stuff," but the sense of weariness they had was really incredible. I know that one of our reporters from The Times got weary just one night, staying up all night in an orchard in Ojai and stuff, and imagine doing it for four nights and stuff. Thanks for your help, and I'll pass it on to them.
We protected for seven nights in a row, countywide, and then probably We protected for seven nights in a row countywide, and then probably a total of nine to 10 nights here and there. Yeah.
I'll pass that on about when you'd be willing to help them inspect their crops.
No problem.
Thank you. And Supervisor Foye has one more.
Just one more question, real quick. You gave us this report, this was the fruit.
Right.
Did it get cold enough? Did we lose any trees? Have we know that yet?
There's some areas along foothill between Ventura and Fillmore, up along the slope, that we probably lost some trees. This was a, all freezes are different, but this was a really anomaly to most of us, because normally the cold air comes down and settles in the flat. Most of our flat, especially along the Santa Clara River Valley, maybe because there was air movement, came through it pretty good, and the hillsides got burnt. So, you know, we're normally, we don't have too much of a trouble, that's where most of our trouble was this time. So, yeah, I think we're going to lose some trees, how much is hard to say right now, because really it's going to take a couple of months before we can really get in there and a grower can tell how many trees he lost or how many trees are going to come back. But the ones that come back, as I said earlier, probably won't have any fruit on them for at least two years.
Okay. But long-term, you're hoping it wasn't too bad, right? These business owners to grow a new tree, we know that's.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I've had reports in my district it reached 17 degrees, remember it ever being that cold there, we had snow in our area.
Well, when you see snow clouds in Malibu, you know you're in trouble.
Yeah. It's two degrees in Rose Valley, two in Rose Valley.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. I would also encourage the Workforce Investment Board to look and see if there's something that they can do in a quick order. I think it would be nice to hear from them, so we'll put in a call to that. But thank you for the report, appreciate you coming this morning. Another disaster for Ventura County.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time on our agenda, we'll go to public comments, and, oh, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, and seeing no objections, that passes. Now we'll go to public comments. We have four public comment cards. I may make that five. And our first speaker is Don Greenberg, followed by Penny Bane.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. I had the privilege of working for the county for more than, well, for 13 years in the county council's office, so I have a very good perspective, at least I think so, of the broad range of terrific services that the county performs. So it's good to see you all, and please keep up the good work. There's a great deal to be done, including the matter you just talked about. I feel a little bit, pick up the morning paper and you read about the problems such as the folks that are unemployed, 88 people killed in Baghdad, the problems are all over the place, and at the same time, we have to keep trying to move forward on positive things. I'm here as a member of a committee that is, has launched a campaign, some of you know about it, you may have read about it in the paper. The Martin Luther King Jr. National Memorial is being built. The groundbreaking occurred in November. It's being built on a site in Washington DC, next to the Franklin Delano Roosevelt Memorial, between the Lincoln and Jefferson Memorials. My time up already? It will be something very, very special. And a local citizen had the idea, this is a very local concept, to try to mount the campaign in Ventura County to raise $1 million toward building the memorial. If this can happen, the Ventura County Campaign can be recognized on the donor wall for posterity. Something very special, it's quite a goal. The memorial is totally nonpartisan, all living presidents, Nancy Reagan, leading Republicans, Democrats, religious leaders, Americans from all walks of life, corporate sponsors are all supporting it. My purpose being here today is simply to make you aware of it, in case you're not, to ask you to pay a little attention to this and to support it if you can. There's now a website, V C, we support the dream dot org, all lowercase. If you would like further information, there are some phone numbers, I would ask that the clerk pass out. There will be ads, we're getting a lot of donated help. Amgem is underwriting the kickoff dinner that will be on February 15th. Ventura County Star is donating a substantial amount of free ad space. State Farm Insurance donated a million dollars nationally, is providing a great deal of help locally. A number of their people are on the steering committee. I don't want to waste a lot of time today, but I would ask that the clerk pass out a copy, you'll probably be seeing this ad, and this succinctly gives you some of the Thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. You can read about that in the paper. Thank you for your efforts. Penny Bane, followed by Charles DeWiel.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Johnston, Christine, and Noel. I'm here this morning, Penny Bane, representing the masterlesses at Channel Islands Harbor, and as I did last month, I've brought for you a report on the slip vacancies. I would like to do this every month, so you could kind of follow that while we're going through some reconstruction and re-enhancing slips at the harbor. On the backside, I would like you to take a look at that, I'll give it to Robert in a moment. But I will also be updating you from the lessees' perspective, their financial growth and their financial excitement about money that they're pumping into the harbor. This quarter, we have well over $30 million that's going to be put into that harbor for slip enhancements and other items. You'll recall the Marine Emporium Landing Building that burned, construction, reconstruction did start on that burned down building on the 8th of this month, so you'll see some activity there as well. And I wanted to thank Mr. Johnston for showing up at Vasita, EDC VC Installation, last week. I too, Mr. Greenberg, worked for the county at the same time Don did, for almost as many years, and the fiscal situation of this county was certainly not what it is today in the years that I worked here. So you've all done a marvelous job, and as Don said, keep up the good work. And in closing, I would like to say, I didn't think I'd be here at 9:30 for Supervisor Flynn's presentation with the Savior's Road Design Team, but I wore my shirt, and it looks like since we're almost at 9:30, I will be here to take photos. But I do attend those meetings as often as I can, and I just want to say that they've improved the quality of life in Oxnard and all of the surrounding area immeasurably over the years. So I thank them for that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles DeWiel, followed by Cesar Hernandez.
Well, good morning to the members of the County Ventura Board of Supervisors. I'm Charles DeWiel, and I'm in Peter Foye's district, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak for these few minutes, okay? Two weeks ago, each board member was provided with literature about the Security and Prosperity Partnership and the North American Union. I hope that each board member took, and his staff, took the time to read it. It needs to be read, and the seriousness of the North American Union be understood. This understanding means that we must do all in our power to stop the North American Union. If it is not stopped, we will be without our independent country. No longer will the destiny of the United States of America be in the hands of Americans, and God help us. I'll give a little example here. NAFTA, I'm sure you're all a little familiar with that at least, 1993 North American Free Trade Area, was only a first step in the plan to create the North American Union. I'm going to give you an example of what occurred in NAFTA in the year 2004. This type of occurrence would likewise happen with the North American Union. A case was brought to the Supreme Court of Massachusetts by a Canadian company. The Massachusetts Court ruled against the Canadian company. The company then appealed to the United States Supreme Court. The appeal was denied. The company then went to a NAFTA court, which overruled both of these US courts. The NAFTA court asserted its power on the Chapter 11 of the NAFTA agreements. I'm here to encourage you as members of the County Ventura Board of Trustees, Supervisors, to ask the California State Legislature to issue a resolution to Congress, and that is to restore the United States, withdraw the United States from the Security and Prosperity Partnership of North America, and any other bilateral or multilateral activity which seeks to create a North American Union. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Cesar Hernandez, followed by Carol Dean Williams.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Cesar Hernandez, I'm a resident of Oxnard, and I'm also the program manager for the Ventura County Agricultural Worker Health Initiative. I want to just express appreciation to the board for moving forward in sending the declarations of emergency to the governor and to the federal government for assistance. I think it's very important that we get that kind of assistance for the growers in this area, but also for the workers specifically. And I know that in other instances in the past, sometimes that hasn't been necessarily a priority, but I think in this county, you know, I'm appreciative of the industry and of the sheriff and the county staff's commitment to seek out those services for workers. What we, I think, are going to see in these offices that have been set up is some very important assistance, but I think, as has been mentioned, unfortunately, for a number of reasons, many of the workers that may be impacted by this situation may not be eligible for some of these services, you know, due to a number of circumstances. I just want to inform the board, and I have been talking to other members of the community, that there is some interest by private foundations out of the Bay Area to provide some assistance and some relief to farmworkers in the area of rental assistance, utility assistance, and maybe even helping out with the local food bank. And so it's very important that information from the county agencies, especially the Ag Commissioner's Office, be provided as soon as possible and as succinctly as possible so that we can get this information to the foundations and they can provide this kind of funding to the community-based organizations and the churches in the area that are going to see an increase in demand for these services. I think the other thing that I want to just point out, which the presentation didn't go much into, but I spoke with Rob Roy from the Ventura County Ag Association yesterday, and depending on the crop, you're going to see different lengths of time that people will be impacted. And so, for example, in the area of vegetables, you're talking about an impact of the next four months, according to people from the Ag Commissioner's Office. The other thing that's important is that within the numbers that were presented, Mr. McPhail talked about half of the peak in our counties, so about 12,000 to 14,000 workers that are potentially impacted. The board should also just recognize that those numbers do not include packing house workers, and if you don't have people picking the fruit, then you don't have people packing the fruit. And so there's going to be additional people that will, and truck drivers and other industries that are impacted as a result of this. So I just, it's important to keep that in mind with regard to the assistance that we will be requesting for this county, making sure that any extensions that are necessary to be requested are done. For example, especially in the area of unemployment insurance benefits, make sure that we have the right amount of extensions that people will be able to apply for during the time that they're out of work. And so I want to thank the board for moving forward and for directing the staff to do this, and also just want to ask you to support in any way you can, the nonprofits and the churches that are going to be seeing a higher demand for services as a result of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker then is Carol Dean Williams.
Carol Dean Williams, 61-year resident. I wanted to show you Mike Bradbury's cowboy poetry here on the personal side, and he ends it with, if there's enough support, he'll do a second one. So come payday, I'm going to pull out $50 for Mike to encourage him to give us a second CD here, and also to celebrate our new supervisor. I've got a new pen name here. Buffalo Will, target shooting his quill. Maverick up Foy, he's a cow man, born on the maverick political team. How'd he tell about these modern day, non-cowboy regimes? He's a cowboy throwing hay out in some me land. This maverick up Foy is now a county farmhand. Maverick up Foy never was a law man. Hellfire, his first project is about a 118 plan. Shert howdy is the refrain of this maverick up Foy. Even the dictionary said no words rhymes, but maverick boy. Hellfire, he's the reform candidate. This maverick up Foy, on whose nerves is he going to grate? Is it Foy time written in the Star as a political maverick? Or does it take 118 to quiet the statique? He's a cowboy, he's a cow man, he's a maverick, who's going to reform the county's political badlands skeptics? Gimme hell Supervisor Foy. I'm sorry that all I know about you is what I read in the Star, and that's what they called you, was a maverick, that's all I know about you. You know, you know, it's kind of disheartening, the only thing that we were told about you by the Star, while you was a candidate, was that you were no good, because they opposed you, but now that you're elected, you know, they get on the bandwagon. I have another item too, madam, so I need to reserve some time for that. Oh muse, you have a name, do you? I have no name. Oh muse, who do you work for? I work for no man. You seek a great fortune. You three who are supervisors, now in political chains, you will find a fortune, though it will not be the political fortune you seek. But first, first you must travel. Travel a long and difficult road. A political road fraught with peril. Mm-mm. You shall see things wonderful to tell. I reserve my time for another item, madam.
Thank you for the poetry this morning.
No, you're welcome.
The next item on our agenda are board comments, and why don't we start with the birthday boy? Supervisor Flynn?
Thank you very much. It is my birthday today. Considering the feelings about the board, I think I'll just wish myself happy birthday. Johnny came up to me this morning and said, are you going to retire? I said, no. He's asked me that before. Anyway, what am I going to say here this morning? I'm going to ask you to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I don't have anything else to say at this time, except I will make comments when we get to, especially the legislative agenda. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and happy birthday. Supervisor Bennett, would you like to go next?
Yes. Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and there are two people I'd like to call out. One, Lillian Reed, who One, Lillian Reed, who you Supervisor Parks will be making some comments on because of her work in Thousand Oaks. And then also Gloria Lopez. She was the Communications Manager for the Human Services Agency, and most recently for the Healthcare Agency. She played a big role, she's the first person that I worked with when I came here, on foster family recruitment. And Gloria was the person that would go with me to go out and, as we would try to talk to churches and other organizations, to try to talk people into becoming foster families. And I was just shocked to find out that she had just passed away. She had been out of work for a little bit of time, but I had no idea that it was something that was life-threatening. So she passed away on Friday, January 12th. So I'd asked the Board to adjourn in memory of Gloria Lopez, and then, would you like to make any comments about Lillian Reed? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Supervisor Foy, would you like to go next?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of these two, and I want to wish Supervisor Flynn a very happy birthday. Is your wife taking you out to dinner or something tonight?
She is, but I have a meeting first.
Oh, county business, right? That's great. No, and I just want to say to Mr. Williams, thank you for all the hard work on that poem. Maybe you could join Bradbury on his next CD. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Long, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, thank you. I have a list to submit to adjourn in memory of those folks in the 3rd District. Couple of things I'd like to mention. One is that we're suffering another impact to our workforce in our county, and with Technicolor moving their operations to Mexico, potentially displacing 630 workers. They certainly advised the HSA Department as required by law, and immediately the Rapid Response Team was put in place, and that team is going to be offering a menu of services to the employees, for orientation for employees, for job opportunities, for job readiness workshops, and for those employees who are not being laid off, maybe staying on to offer some additional training. So I appreciate that we have in place a Rapid Response Team to, particularly for large companies like this. I don't pretend to know all the details of the corporate decision-making. I obviously think it's unfortunate that we are losing businesses. This is a significant one in Camarillo, and I think county-wide, because I think Technicolor supported Boys and Girls Clubs. I mean, they've been just wonderful corporate partners in supporting our community, so I just, it's unfortunate, and I'm pleased that we, again, have a Rapid Response Team that activates to assist the employees, but it's tough times, and I would hope that it's an anomaly. I think we work very hard in our county to bring in a diversity of businesses, and we've been successful with the biotech area, obviously some of our other large employers who are here, but they're all being challenged with the cost of doing business, the cost of living in the county, and I think we need to be very attuned to that. And in segueing that, I would also like to thank Mr. Johnston for his excellent State of the County address to the Economic Collaborative and VCT's joint meeting last week. That community is certainly the leaders in our community that works with our businesses and tries their very best to find out what their needs are, to support programs that will support their needs and to keep them, retain them in our county, and also look for new opportunities for new businesses. Mr. Johnson did an excellent overview of the health of our county, the challenges we face, and I heard from many people who were in attendance that he did so in a layperson's level of understanding, knowing that we sit up here and deal with the complexities of county government programs and services, and he was able to, again, present that in very straightforward, understandable, truthful, and encouraging statements that the audience truly appreciated. So I thank Mr. Johnson for doing that. I don't know if Supervisor Parks may mention this, but I want to also. I think that, speaking of regional cooperation, that we work best when we cooperate regionally, and VCOG did an excellent job at their last meeting in agreeing on the housing elements that this region is willing to accept over the next six years, is it a five-year plan, for the state housing element. And reaching agreement with all 10 cities in the county is not an everyday occurrence. So if you can speak more to that, if you wish to Supervisor Parks, I just thought that was, I was delighted to hear that that was in the works and to see the VCOG body act so regionally for the benefit of all of us, so I wanted to send kudos out there. And I think everything's been said as far as the agricultural freeze issues that we're facing and challenges, and as I mentioned, there will be a meeting that the Ag Association, I appreciate that they're calling on the 31st of January to further meet with the community, hear from the growers, talk about, you know, are we being as proactive as possible in every step we can possibly take to assist the workers and the growers and the overall industry. And then the last thing I would say is that this morning, this community said homeless people count in our community, and we're doing that by doing a real street count of the homeless. It was kicked off at 6 o'clock this morning, many locations. There's quite a team, folks in almost every city in the county, and volunteers from the faith community, from our nonprofits, from, obviously, our HSA agency, from our law enforcement agency, they form teams and they're out counting the homeless. And they're doing so with the tool that has been used in other, in other street counts that is generic enough to protect privacy, but gets enough indicators for us to be able to really measure what we are challenged with, with homeless in our county as we move ahead to work on the, accepting the steps for the 10-year plan to prevent, manage, and change the face of homelessness in our county. So although the temperatures were in the low 40s, there were, there are many people out, as we speak, in the street doing the count, in the river bottoms, in the hard-to-reach places, to do a real street count of homeless in our county, and I thank them for their work, and we'll proceed to work on the 10-year plan, and the Board will be hearing more about that as it progresses. So I wanted to say that, and I will also extend happy birthday greetings to Supervisor Flynn.
Thank you.
A day of birth is an important day, and one to celebrate.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Flynn.
I forgot to mention one thing, if I can have a minute. I want to congratulate Mr. Greenberg for his support and leadership in honoring Martin Luther King Jr. It's commendable of you to do this. You know, for the past 20-some years, City of, or Oxnard, the people of Oxnard have celebrated the birthday of Martin Luther King. And this time, I went to Ojai, because Ojai emphasized children, and I went up there, and there were just a number of young people there, celebrating Martin Luther King's birthday. I thought that was so instructional, and passing on the message that we need always to work to end racism in the country. We're working at it, it's getting better, and I commend you for your efforts.
All right. So I think that got all the Board members but myself on comments. Did you have another comment that you wanted to make?
I did. I had a question for the CEO, actually, and that was if the CEO could give us an update in terms of where we are with the, with the work that we're doing in terms of the investigations of the Public Guardians Office, and we've asked for more follow-up through the CEO's office. So if you could help with, if you could help with that at whatever you think is the appropriate time to give us that information, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
If you do have a status, would you like to share?
Certainly. First, I'd like to say happy birthday to John. And I think you asked if I was retiring, rather than the other way around, but that's okay, we're both here.
It still feels good to be younger than you are.
With more hair. Yes, the Guardians Office, your Board directed the CEO to work with the Auditor Controller and the County Council to review what has taken place. I'd like to emphasize in my report, one, that this is an issue that came up well over a year ago, about a year and a half ago, and that the Treasurer immediately did take steps to report it to the District Attorney's Office, who has been working since then on an investigation. The people that were harmed, that have been identified, restitution has been made, or restitution, but they have been made whole through the county's office. What we have done is we had a meeting with County Council, the District Attorney, the Auditor Controller, and the Guardians Office and my office. We created a scope of work for an outside review to verify what has been done and to make recommendations to your Board on what might be done, if there's anything more that needs to be done. That the Auditor Controller took the lead on putting that scope of work together. Our office coordinated that with the Purchasing Office. The scope of work is a request for qualifications from vendors or consultants, has been out for about two weeks now. We expect that possibly by next week, we will have selected someone to perform the work. The scope will do it in phases. The very first thing we would like to do is to go back and have them review the grand jury's review, the auditor's previous review, and the, all the work that the Treasurer has done. And while in his report, he spent most of the time, you know, explaining what went wrong, one of the things that didn't get across to the public, or possibly not to some of the audience, was that the Treasurer has basically, or virtually, replaced all of the staff in that office, changed the systems, has new management, and they've been working on that for well over a year. Your Board, a year ago December, authorized both the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office to increase staffing, not as much as we'd like to have been able to do it, but substantial. In the case of the Guardians Office, a year ago December, the authorization was increased by 40% if the Treasurer felt he needed it. I am assuming, based on my conversations with him, that much of, or most of the work that needed to be done has long since been put in place over there, so things are better. But in order to not go another year without having some kind of verification of what we're doing and is the right, are the right things, we expect that we'll have a report back to your Board, probably the first phase of the report in six weeks, which will describe what has been done so far to assure that these problems don't occur in the future. And then the second part of the report will describe what, if anything, remains to be done. In addition to that, I will be having an outside specialist come in and work, one of the things, well, let me take a step backward. In the, the way the county is organized, that there are a number of departments that are directly under my office, there are some that are under the Board, my office, and the Courts, and then there are six departments that have directly elected administrators. The Treasurer's Office and the Guardian Office happens to be one. A question that always comes up when there's a failure is how much of this is the result of workload or staffing issues, and depending on where you sit as to whether or not you want to attribute it to that. Clearly, with a reduction in workforce, and this county has cut during the last five years, they have cut the general government 10% of the staffing levels, and that was both necessary and in some cases overdue, to make some corrections in the way we were organized, but general government includes things like the Guardians Office, the Assessor's Office, the Auditor's Office. And so as things have gotten better, we have attempted to restore staffing levels, but clearly we're not going to have enough money to put all the staff in place that everybody would like. So a big question comes in those departments where the administrators are directly elected. Your Board's role is basically resource allocation. That is, in the springtime, they come before you to describe what they believe is necessary to do that job, and then to do the best of your ability, and as far as the funds go, we try to divide them up so that we can keep government going. So a big question always is staffing ratios. So we're going to bring in a consultant, the people who do this around the state and around the country, and have them work directly with each of the elected department heads on those staffing ratio questions, so that we can have that data for you when the budget hearings commence. And the budget is, well, we'll have the first of the budget discussions starting as far as the process in February, and we hope to have that information available to you by about April. So it's about a three-pronged approach. Things are moving along, there then substantial change made in the Treasurer-Guardians Office, and the Auditor is currently, as they, on a regular basis, they do cash audits, but they're doing additional audits or review of the Treasurer's Office, as your Board suggested, to be sure that we don't have any other areas that, you know, are potential failures. At this stage, we don't think there are, but we're taking it very seriously, and we'll have a full report for you probably within about eight weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just, I'll give my, a couple minutes of Board comments for myself. One, again, wishing Supervisor Flynn happy birthday. It's also the birthday of John Hancock. You probably know that, as we're all sitting here signing many things.
I'm signing my name, Laura.
Today. He has a very unique signature.
King George.
I also wanted to comment on a couple of things. Supervisor Long had mentioned kind of the remarkable, I think, situation where we had all the cities in the county, plus the county represented on VCOG, the Ventura Council of Governments, come together in one room and unanimously agreed to take their burden of affordable housing into their cities. And it was more than everybody wanted, but everyone took a little bit more than they thought they could do, and I think that was the best way to handle it, and it was nice to see that cooperation, and I think it was remarkable, and I think it will help us in the future also to have those kind of relationships. So hopefully we'll do more regional government as we go on, and I think everybody benefits as a result. I also attended last week, on Thursday, January 18th, a meeting called Filling the Gaps, and that was in the East County, looking at affordable housing in the East County, and it was a very good symposium. It had about probably seven to 10 speakers, all from agencies all over the county, that are working on providing services and assistance, housing and otherwise, for people of very low income and low income. So that was a great conference, I'm glad I was able to attend. Also, last night, we had a fire in my district, and this was over in Westlake Village. It was threatening our council member's house, Claudia Bill de la Peña, as well as one of my staff members. I went out there and took a tour with the Fire Chief Roper, and it was just one of those things, again, where you're just awed by the firefighters, and my staff member had the fire come right out, right to the back of her back wall. She just realized how close this fire came to people's homes, and these professional firefighters and being calm while everyone else is kind of crazy, and just doing a marvelous job. We got to see also the GPS system that we have now in our fire units, which by just looking at the screen, you can see where every fire truck is, and I think that's really helpful and really helps in communication. It was nice to see that up and working well. I also wanted to ask that the Board close in honor of the people on this list. I want to call out a few. Carlo Ponti, the husband of Sophia Loren, a great movie maker, passed away, and he was a resident in Hidden Valley. Also an individual, Nikki Bakarac, who is the daughter of both Burt Bakarac and Angie Dickinson. She had Asperger's Syndrome, and I had worked with another resident out in Hidden Valley, Dr. Grossman, and specifically trying to put together a nonprofit to help people with Asperger's and autism, and it was through the inspiration of Nikki that that nonprofit formed. Additionally, I think, I think we're all saddened and surprised to hear Harriet Wexel this morning come up before us and tell us about the tragedies in her life just in the last few months, both losing her brother, her son, and her brother-in-law. So I would ask that, in addition, we close in honor of those people. And Supervisor Bennett mentioned Lillian Reed in his district, who lives in Ojai, that also passed away, and I just wanted to point out that Lillian was a significant assist to Girl Scouts in Thousand Oaks area, as well as throughout the county. She was always at all the Thousand Oaks Service Units meetings to get the leaders signed up for training. And there's a quote here, I think her daughter wrote this obituary, how she made many lifelong friendships through her work with Scouts. Mom also attained semi-legendary... Mom also attained semi-legendary status as the founder of the Waynimi Hellions, a tightly knit group of women who ran the Scouts Port Waynimi service unit and had a great time doing it. With their matching t-shirts, loud laughter, and dangling cigarettes, they were described as resembling a gang of biker chicks in green. They inspired both awe and fear for their fellow Girl Scouts. And she also earned the Girl Scout Woman of Distinction Living Treasure Award in 1999. She will also, as well as these other, be very much missed. So with that, that concludes our board comments, and now we'll go on to our first nine thirty times certain item. And this item is item number twenty-seven. And this is a presentation of a resolution to the Ventura Lions Club, and Supervisor Bennett will do this one.
Thank you very much. This is really a delight here this morning to get to do this, and I think to kick this off, I'd like to ask the members of the Lions who are here, I know that Jeff Roundy is here, Jolene Flanagan, Brady Rourke, Steve Bowman, Charlie Burnham, Don Greenberg, who was here earlier on the MLK, and Kevin Selos. Could you all come forward, please, so that we can recognize you while we read these nice things here? And our, Joellen Flanagan is the president. I might also, before I just start, just call out, Don Greenberg, being here twice, just gives you an idea of how much he's, particularly since retirement, but I think it was with Lions before that, gotten himself involved in the community things. It's MLK, it's Lions, it's all kinds of things. And Jeff Roundy has just really stepped up to the plate in our efforts to try to do more for the foster children of Ventura County. And I know, Jeff, you played a key role in encouraging the Lions Club to take, to dedicate their May fundraiser for foster youth in Ventura County. And Lions, all of the Lions are hopeful that they can raise $30,000 for foster children at that.
It's actually the Association of Realtors subgroup.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Great. It's the Association of Realtors, which is another hat that Jeff wears with regards to this. Many of us, I was not aware of it till it was called to my attention, many of us are not aware that the Lions Club has owned a home for 38 years and operated it as a foster home since August of 1969. It's estimated that the Lions Cottage Home has fostered approximately 300 foster children. And so today is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring the Lions Club for the contribution of this home for foster children. And the foster home recently went through a series of renovations. It has an active foster parent and children in it right now. The home is close to an elementary school and a high school. It's very conducive for foster parenting. The Human Services Agency would like to particularly thank the Lions Cottage Board for their support to the foster care program by providing this home for foster families to live in. A large, comfortable home for foster parents is really critical because it allows you to keep siblings together. One of the great challenges that we have in the foster care program is that we have to, I mean, the real tragedy is to separate siblings at a moment when they need foster care. Many foster children are separated from their siblings, initially placed in the foster home, causing them to endure more pain and angst. Lions Cottage Home enables foster parents to physically and financially house whole sibling families to promote a sense of stability and emotional healing. And the family would like to extend their appreciation for having the opportunity to live in the cottage home. The foster parent feels very fortunate to be given the financial ability to afford to take time off work, which has enabled her to spend more time with her children and provide for her children in many ways, in terms of extracurricular activities and fun educational trips. So today, therefore be it resolved, that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring the Ventura Lions Club for their contribution of Cottage Home for foster families, this the 23rd day of January. And before I turn it over to the Lions for comments from Joellen and whoever else you think is appropriate, I'd like to have Elaine Martinez come up, and she is the program manager for our human services agencies and our Children and Family Services Department, for her comments about the great value of this asset, and I'll bring the resolution down. Thank you very much, Elaine.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'd like to acknowledge the board for recognizing the contributions of the Lions Cottage. This organization has supported foster children and foster families in Ventura County for a long time, as you know, very long time. I'd also like to acknowledge Supervisor Bennett. Thank you, Supervisor, for your interest and commitment in the role that you've extended to the Human Services Agency in helping foster children in areas of recruitment and retention programs. Thank you for the continued partnership. It is my pleasure to publicly and formally appreciate the Lions organization. I have to say that this organization is so easy to work with. They're an easy bunch. That's always great. You know, you think about the value of just a home, just in these days, and they're so generous. Everything is just real easy, over the phone, get it done, and the foster parents really appreciate not having any red tape. And so what I have noticed is that the foster parents that live there always feel very comfortable, and that is very, very important. You think about the arrangement, and there's no pressure. So that is just really, really wonderful. The Lions Club is very easygoing, but make no mistake, they're very serious about supporting foster families and foster children. Foster parents appreciate the financial and emotional support given to them, and we, the Human Services Agency, also appreciate the easygoing relationship that we have with you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to present this resolution to Joellen and ask you if there are any comments you'd like to make on behalf of the Lions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Foster home, our Cottage Home foster home has meant a lot to me. I was president one year, and it has its own board, and I would really like to introduce the board members. Brady Rourke has been on the board for a long time of the foundation. Charlie Burnham, and Kevin Selos is involved with it. And I would like to ask if, Charlie, would you like to just, a brief, briefly tell them why you're so involved, because you do it the best? And I'd like, you really want to hear from this man. He is so involved with Cottage Home. He's really a foundational person, as well as Brady, but Brady is shy.
This Cottage Home program is based on a situation that Bob Coombs, who has worked for the county for years, he was a psychologist in the school district, he had observed it in Australia, and a church in Australia was running this, and so he brought the idea back to our club. And they approved, the club liked it, they agreed to buy a house, found, our first foster family was a Lions, a member of our Lions Club. And we got the, we have a special use permit to have up to six foster children, and that's how we're able to keep sibling groups together, because of the number of children we can handle. And then the family can have up to three children, so we often have 11 people in this home. It's 1,950 square feet. It's not that, not that big a home, but we try to keep, make it comfortable for them. The one interesting thing we did when we started out, we were so excited about this project, that we put the family in before the conditional use permit was approved by the county, but by the city rather.
The city.
By the city. But they, luckily, they approved it, so we're still there, and we, we appreciate this commendation, and we'll keep that home going as long as we can. Thank you very much. We'd like to get your picture, if you could come right over here, and Anna, if you'd come down. Get your picture.
Sure. Anna, they want you to do too. Oh, here, there we go. Yeah. You can get it right there.
Madam Chair.
Yes. I would just like to add our thanks. What a wonderful resource, but what a wonderful home for children in need. Thank you so much, Lions Club. We sure appreciate you.
Yes, Supervisor Foy.
I just want to say that, you know, we all look to government to do things. I think this country is founded on great people doing great things like this, and the idea you can keep a whole family together, that's tremendous. I grew up with seven brothers and sisters, and I could imagine if something would have happened to me, to split the family up, it would have been crazy. So that's, it's just a real blessing for the people, and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, and thank you for being an inspiration for others, too. Get some more of those. Our next item on the agenda and the next couple are, starting with item 28, a presentation by Supervisor Flynn on the Savior's Road Design Team.
Okay, you see all the blue shirts, sweaters in front of you with LNG on them? I don't know what that means. Maybe they can tell us. But I would like them to all come forward, and let me present this resolution to you.
Let me do this.
Okay. They never miss a chance to tell their position on the LNG, but they're here today primarily to, for the board, for myself, to.
Focus attention.
You okay? They're here today so that we can recognize people who work in the community, who work on issues, who are not afraid to take positions on issues, who've stayed together since 1999. That's a long time. And they, they really represent all of Ventura County, but more particularly South Oxnard. And so they're called the Savior's Road Design Team, and I'm really very proud of them, because citizens groups like this, like you see before you, don't always stay together for such a long time. Think of it, since 1999. And they, they hit on issues that affect the lives of people in the city of Oxnard primarily, but also they represent people who live in South Oxnard. So I'm proud of each one of you and the work that you've done. You've been absolutely amazing in continuing to show up at meetings, to be before the City of Oxnard Council, and to show where you stand on these issues. I'm really quite proud of you. We're very fortunate to have you living in the city of Oxnard, each one of you. So we have this resolution, and I'm going to call on Shirley Godwin. Larry's not here today, correct? And if you, when you come up, you would introduce each one. Let me just read this to you. Whereas the Savior's Road Design Team came into existence, like I said, with Sylvia Preston serving as the first chairperson, and Shirley Godwin, who's going to speak this morning, serving as the current chairperson, consists of longtime residents of South Oxnard, the larger Oxnard community and of Ventura County, who share the common goal of improving and revitalizing South Oxnard, and who work as a team in order to accomplish their goal. And the, the resolution goes into much of what they've done, and I want to present this to Shirley, who is the chair, and again, commend each one of them, and ask Shirley to come up and make a presentation.
Thank you.
We'll get our picture. Very important part, Shirley. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, my name is Shirley Godwin, and I am a 44-year resident of Oxnard, and many of the people behind me are very longtime residents of Oxnard, some are several generations. Especially want to thank the board for recognizing us, and our supervisor, John Flynn, who represents most of our area, and he has represented us very well over a number of years, and we really appreciate all he has done for us. You will notice the Ormond Beach shirts, you've already heard those mentioned. We are very focused on Ormond Beach. Ormond Beach is very important, not only to Oxnard, but the whole community. We see this as a tremendous asset to our community. You'll notice the embroidery, snowy plovers on the shirts. One of our members, Doris O'Connell, her daughter did the embroidery for us. I'd like to introduce the members of our group, and you'll probably recognize many of them and their names, because almost all have been long-term leaders in our community. We have Roger Perizzo, Doris O'Connell, her daughter did this wonderful embroidery work, Ed Ellis, Pat Brown, Bernadette Strousky, Bill Terry, Jean Harris, Gloria Roman, Mary Anne Hatch, Avigera. And we have a very large group, and obviously, some were at work today and couldn't make it. And the LNG buttons that Supervisor Flynn mentioned, we are very passionately opposed to the LNG. We feel like this is wrong for the entire California coast. It's polluting, and it is not needed. But we also focus on a lot of issues, quality of life issues in our community, parks, new development, and a lot of things that affect the people of South Oxnard and all of Oxnard. And I was hoping today that our original founder, Sylvia Preston, could be here. We really want to commend her. Eight years ago, she had the vision of the need for a community group like this, and she really set the tone for this group, a wonderful example of how to work with people and the direction of our group. And she is still a regular member of our group and attends our Monday night meetings. And those meetings are always open meetings, a time for open discussion. Anybody who's welcome, who is looking at how to improve our community. And I'd like to acknowledge someone really special, and I'd like her to say a few words. We are so honored to be able to work with Jean Harris on Ormond Beach issues, and I'd like her to make a few comments about Ormond Beach.
Thank you, and special welcome to Supervisor Foy. We haven't met him before. I'm going to talk about money and about people, and both fronts are very successful right now. You may have read that a million dollars was granted to purchase additional land by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and Kathy attends our meetings so regularly, and it's an honor to have her there. The people are these people. They're remarkable. I, when Roma Armbrust died, she's, just before, she said, "Carry on." And these are the people that carry on. And they're the kind of people that everything you need, I mean, we need to set up a website. Roger will do that. We need to have kids learn about the plants. Nancy does that. I mean, there's someone that takes the place of everything that we really need and enters right into it. And I'd like to quote Margaret Mead, because I think she said it the best. She said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens will change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has."
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, and we're, again, proud. Please join me in applauding the group.
Madam Chair, if I might, thank you. Great to see all of you here, and great to really acknowledge all of your good work. You have been the real stewards of the great vision for the Ormond Beach plan, and I think it's great you provided this to all the board members. I certainly have been on all the email threads for the Savior's Road Design Team work, and you always have a very aggressive and active agenda. Part of South Oxnard is now in the third district, Ormond Beach certainly is, so it's a pleasure to work with all of you, because you do work, you have your positions, they're very, you speak them very strongly and very informed, and you do things that are both opposed to positions, but also very proactively and positive things. And the Ormond Beach one is just such a positive, positive treasure for all of us, and it's because of your work that it will be a treasure, continue to be a treasure for us. The neighborhood councils in Oxnard, I think, are just The neighborhood councils in Oxnard, I think, are just a great resource for the leadership in Oxnard to be able to feel like they have the grassroots voice that is heard and listened to. And the work that you do is so valuable to all of us. So it's my pleasure to work with you, and thank you for all your good work.
Supervisor Flynn?
Just real quick, I appreciate the people in the Savers Road Design Team, but I particularly appreciate an opportunity to see Jean Harris again. Particularly since Jean, I just wanted to pass on a personal thing. And Jean moved from Mandalay Bay in my district to Ventura Townhouse in my district. And I used you very effectively as my example as I discussed with my mother her new living arrangements after she moved out of her house of 56 years, and how much you liked and enjoyed the townhouse. So I just want to let you know it was effective. She's moving this coming weekend.
With my heart, she's in Oxnard.
And it's just great to see you still kicking it active. And Roma would be very proud of all of you guys for continuing the efforts that she wanted to do. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'd also just like to say, you know, definitely, your presence is felt in the county, and you are doers. And I remember meeting Jean Harris out on Savers Road, and she's telling me what needs to be purchased and how we're going to do this. And once you put together a vision and you're starting to see funding come for it, it just must be really gratifying. But it really starts with coming together and having that vision. I just want to congratulate you. I think you're a model for others, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Happy birthday, John.
Our next item on our agenda is also one from Supervisor Flynn. And this is item 29. And this is a presentation honoring the director of the rescue mission. Supervisor Flynn?
Yeah, I take, is Carol Roeburg present? There she is. Okay. Again, this is an honor for me to present this resolution to Carol Roeburg. She has been fantastic for the whole county of Ventura with the Ventura County Rescue Mission for the past 18 years. And she has literally run the whole operation. And we're so proud of you, and thank you so much for that, really a private, nonprofit organization. If you drive by the buildings that they have, I remember it used to be in one little tiny building. Now they're in big buildings. And you must have about 18 trucks that pick up clothing, furniture, and so forth. And you did sell cars, I think you still do. And all this money is used for what? It's used to help people who need help, who have run up against it, who have run out of luck, who have run into so many barriers in their life. So we have someone in our county, Carol Roeburg, who puts her hand out and brings them along. And that's what this resolution is about here this morning. Let me just read some of it to you. Whereas Carol Roeburg has led the Ventura County Rescue Mission for the past 18 years as its executive director. In this role, she has a tremendous impact on the problem of homelessness in Ventura County, achieving this without the benefit of government funds, a point that Mr. Foy made earlier. Whereas the Rescue Mission Alliance has been providing essential care to the homeless for the past 34 years, during which time it has operated the Rescue Mission and the Lighthouse Women and Children's Mission, which operate year-round shelters for homeless men, women, and children. Whereas the Ventura County Rescue Mission serves the homeless with 12-step drug and alcohol recovery program, where men ranging in age from 18 to 72 live and work together in harmony and provides them with job training. An example of which is award-winning culinary arts school, which graduated 37 people in 2005. And whereas under your leadership, Carol Roeburg, the Ventura County Rescue Mission has an excellent rapport with the courts, law enforcement, both of which refer many clients, and has hosted homeless court and other community events where clients and others can obtain information on resources and employment opportunities throughout the county. And therefore, on this day, the 23rd day of January 2007, this resolution is presented to you. And thank you for all the work that you've done for Ventura County.
Thank you very much, John.
Can she get a picture too? Copy, okay.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of all the people at the rescue mission, I thank you. Our motto is changing lives for good is our only business. And we don't just warehouse people. We graduated 50 men from our drug and alcohol recovery program last year, and many of those are working in the community and in fine kitchens and on the offshore drilling rigs, which, I'm glad that some of the LNG people, oh, they're still here, okay. But I want to thank Supervisor Flynn and Supervisor Long, long association with both of those, and newly appointed Supervisor Foy. And we thank you, sir, for making our toy giveaway the most successful this year. We distributed 2,700 wrap toys to poor and homeless children. So thank you very much, and God bless you.
Would you like to go on to the next item then, Supervisor Flynn?
Go on to the next item. Let me ask Ignacio Carmona if you come forward, your family members? All of you? Come right on up here, Ignacio. Ignacio has several of his sons and, I think, daughter-in-law? Daughter-in-law Susan's sitting back. Why don't you come up too? Oh, you don't want to? Art and Junior and Max Pena and son, let's see, Ignacio. We got them all?
Three of them, three of them anyway.
Okay. Okay, three of them anyway, he has many more at home. Here's a great human being. Look at him. He has served in various capacities in Ventura County, in the city of Oxnard. He once served on the mental health board a few years back, maybe five or six years ago. He raised a wonderful family. He's a business person in the city of Oxnard. He has a historical moment in his life in that when now Takasugi went off to a relocation camp, guess who took his place and ran his store until he got back? Ignacio Carmona did that. So he is historical. He's been my friend for a long time. He's, look how good a shape he's in, you know why? He works out in the gym. He and I used to work out together and on the treadmill. And he would go on and on and on for how long?
About an hour.
An hour.
That was a long time ago.
So we're proud of him, and we're giving you this, excuse me, I'm sorry, this resolution. And he was born in 1916 in Jalisco, Mexico, with his two sisters and four brothers. And his parents moved to New Mexico when he was seven before coming to Oxnard. From an early age, he set his sights on improving his station in life and thus attended night school, Oxnard High School, enrolled in various business classes such as typing, store management, bookkeeping, and therefore opened up Los Amigos Market on 7th Street and Oxnard Boulevard, which later became now Takasugi's Market, and then you got back into it. He was drafted in 1944, served in the Army for two years. Upon his return, helped run the Takasugi Market. And I mentioned that. And he was married to Imma Heredia for 56 years until her passing in the year 2000. And together they had seven children, and they have 28, I think. Their seven children had 28 grandchildren, right, and great-grandchildren. And the family is a very patriotic family. It's a self-made family. It's a family that worked hard, very, very, very hard. Ignacio, we call him Ignacio, Ignacio, lives in the city of Oxnard. He lives in the, on Colonial Road. And I'm very proud to be his friend, but also very proud to recognize his efforts in Ventura County. So with those words, I give you this resolution, Ignacio.
I understand.
You want to say a few words?
Yeah. It's been a long time. I'm 90 years old now, and what I can say is that you're all young and don't get old. I've been with many organizations, and I know that it's hard to realize that it's tangled by, you get old. And I'm one, I'm old, and, but I still have a spirit of cooperation from different things that I do. The latest thing that I have done is I have joined the senior citizens. And it's hard to realize how time goes on and on until you get old. I got to, I'm 90 years old now, and, but I'm still, I still go. If God leaves me in this world, I'll go as much as I can. I want to thank John and the board of supervisors for recognizing me as a humble person. I want to thank you all for recognizing me, and John for, also for recognizing me. So I want to thank all of you for doing that. Thank you very much.
And happy birthday. Yes, Supervisor Foy?
It's great to see a great American, John. Supervisor Flynn? He's not going to pay attention. Hopefully you'll bring him back on his 100th birthday, okay? All right.
We do have a 10:00 a.m. item, and then, I think, would the board like to take a quick break before we get to the 10:00 a.m. item? They say I'll take 15 minutes. So we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then come back and do our 10:00 a.m. item. We'll come back to our session and our first item is item 31. It's our first 10:00 AM and only 10:00 AM item. And this is regarding fees for our parks. And Mr. Gosfield is here. And this is a public hearing. Is that right? Did I hear that it was? Then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnston, this is the public hearing to discuss and to have approved the changes to the rent and fee schedule for the parks, properties. There are a few points I would like to bring forward before we take questions. I also have with me today our park director, Mr. Ron Van Dyke, and from financial, Mr. Greg Bergman, to answer the hard questions when they come up. The first is that these adjustments are an attempt to bring our rents and fees in line with what the market is bearing. And as such, a rather extensive market analysis was completed that considered park properties throughout the state. As an enterprise fund, this is an important process for us as the expenses we incur, labor, supplies, equipment, and the like, continue to rise. Our park rent and fee schedule up until last year had not gone up for some eight years or so, and we're trying in a couple of steps to bring those to the market levels. And it is not our intent to raise those rents and fees every year. In fact, I would prefer to not to do that, and that's why this process is important. Also, I'd like to point out that where there are local commissions in place, such as in our community centers, those commissions have voted and approved, and in some cases actually proposed these rent and fees. So those have been voted upon and approved by those community commissions. And also, our park advisory commission voted and unanimously approved these amendments at their November 13 meeting. So with those points brought forward, I would like at this time to take any questions from the board.
Does the board have any questions? Supervisor Bennett?
I am curious about your comment about you don't want to do this. Oftentimes, we've had this issue come up. I remember we were voting on an airport increase, and they hadn't changed the fees in 10 years, and then they said they needed a really big increase because they hadn't changed the fees in 10 years. And it seems more appropriate for us, maybe not every year, but at least maybe every two years, to keep moving so that we don't have, you know, don't have to hit with big increases. So what's your game plan? Are you intending to come every two years?
That is exactly right, unless we have some unforeseen increase, for example, in building supplies, and we've gone through something like that, as you know. But unless that happens, we plan to keep our eye on the market as things go forward and then only come back every maybe two to three years as those forces change. But the corollary to raising the fees is that it also costs us money when we do that. We have to change signage. We have to change information, brochures, that type of thing. So there's a balance to be struck in doing that. And so I think your comment about every two years or three years or so is important so we avoid coming back in seven or eight years with a huge increase. We don't want to go back to that.
Eight years seems like a fairly long time ago. Okay, good. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Supervisor Boye?
In this projected budget that you have here, I was just going to ask a question. You, in the box, we have, Johnny and I talked about this yesterday in the meeting. You call it appropriations. Are we really talking about expenses here? Revenue expense? I'm just curious because just as new, some of them call it expenses, some will call it appropriations. I'm just curious where.
Well, they're revenues from the use of our park properties. And the differences you see are based on the projected use, and you can never always predict that. But based on our projected use and the revenue changes that we're advocating here, we project those differences.
Okay.
And Greg, do you have anything?
I guess I was just asking more in regards to just where did you use here appropriations versus other people? You see in the box on the top of your page there?
Maybe Mr. Johnston can answer too. Because I think it's kind of a template, isn't it?
It is, but as Mr. Boye did point out, and then I told him, you know, fresh eyes are always good. You look at stuff that we look at and we don't notice. Some departments have that template, and they have used the term expenditure, and others have used appropriation. I think generally speaking, it's almost interchangeable, even though technically or from an accounting standpoint, an expenditure is clearly different than an appropriation. It's an amount that you actually either know or have reason to believe is going to be the money going out the door. The appropriation is the authorization. So the supervisor's question is, are we using this in terms of the budget projection authorization, therefore an appropriation? Or is this the actual projected expenditure for the year?
You confused me with that last comment, Johnny.
Good. I'm not the only one there.
Yes and no. The adjusted budget would certainly be the approved expenditure plan, the operational plan, whereas the projected budget is kind of where we see ourselves at the end of the year in terms of total expenditures.
So in this case, they're interchangeable virtually?
Yes, that'd be correct.
No, and I like your word you use here, operating gain or loss, because a lot of other people don't use that.
Well, we're unique in the fact that we are, that the Parks Department is an enterprise fund, so we don't have a net cost or a net cost or gain to the general fund. So it's really, we're working off a retained earnings basis, and so they are, you know, operating gains and losses, and those are carried forward historically through the use of retained earnings.
Right. Great.
It's also important to understand that we have some properties that do not generate revenues. The Ojai Valley Bike Trail, for example, it's a great trail, but there's no use fee to use that. But our enterprise fund as a whole has to be sufficient to cover our expenses on those properties as well, so.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Great. And going back to what Supervisor Bennett had said, I thought was a good comment coming in on a regular basis. I know it's expensive to make some changes, but the net gain, but also, human nature is if I'm a park user and it went up a couple percent this year and a couple percent extra, I'm used to that. It's hard. I bet you people are going to scream when you come up and all of a sudden, eight years later.
No doubt.
There's a huge, we did that in healthcare. It's always easier to charge somebody a little bit every year. They get used to that and it's doing it. But, okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. I was, I think it's a good question I was going to ask Ms. Collins, if you have a comment about some departments do it one way and some departments do it the other way in regards to expenditures or allocations, and if you think that we may want to make it consistent or in some cases, it's important to have that distinction?
You would have the distinction with an enterprise fund versus a governmental fund, even though we impose a budgetary controls as if they were a governmental fund. An enterprise fund is accounted for differently. I'd be happy to look at the naming convention here and see if we can make some clarifications and improvement. I know that both the auditor's office and CEO's office staff have had some discussions in the past on how to improve the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Are there any comments or a motion?
Do you have a public hearing?
Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I have no cards, so do I now have a motion?
Do you have a public hearing?
We have a motion in a second. Seeing no objections, that passes. Thank you. Our next item is our 10:30 AM time-certain item, item 32. And this is our proposed legislative agenda, and Sue Hughes has been working on this for some time and reflective in the large bulky packet that we have.
Anne? Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board. Mr. Johnston, for the record, my name is Sue Hughes. I'm a legislative analyst for the county of Ventura. And I'm here today with the proposed 2007 state and federal legislative agenda and platform. And as happens each year, this document is put together in a joint collaboration with all of the departments, the budget staff from our office, and the legislative analyst. The document is broken down into, well, this board letter, into five sections. Attachment A is the state agenda. Attachment B is the federal agenda. C and D are the state and federal platform. And then attachment E is one that looks scary when you see it in print, but anything that's in black on attachment E is something that has been on there before. Anything that is a strike through in red is something that has been taken off this year, either because it's been accomplished or because it's no longer viable. And those items in blue are the new things that have been added. So mostly what I'll highlight this morning is the new things that have been added. And just as a reminder, attachments A and B, they give your boards sort of funding and program priorities, whereas attachments C and D are the meat of what helps our office work with our advocates in Sacramento, Washington, DC, and our legislators, and that's your policy principles. So they're a little more generic in description on the C and D documents. So with that, if I can kind of give you an idea of how they're broken down, the agendas themselves, both document A and B, are broken down by new bill requests, budget requests, and then general policy issues. So just to backtrack a little bit, the county did have one piece of legislation that was introduced last year, and we were successful in getting that signed by the governor. And that was SB 1618, introduced by Senator McClintock, that now allows performance and payment bond waiver during emergencies for the watershed protection district. So we were successful in the one piece of legislation we did ask to be introduced. This year, we have, Assemblymember Nava has agreed to introduce a piece of legislation that we're calling the statewide public safety officer recruitment. And what that would do, it would fund a state program that would initiate and allow us public service announcements throughout the state of California, not just for recruiting purposes for the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, but for all law enforcement agencies throughout the state of California. And Assemblymember Nava has agreed to do that for us, so we're working on that. As a side note, there's another item that's listed on the agenda for the state, and that's, we've worked the last couple of years looking for an author to help us describe what seaworthiness of vessels are. And I'm meeting with Assemblymember Cameron Smythe tomorrow. I'm meeting with his staff, well, conference call, to talk about that and see if they are interested in introducing legislation for us on that. So we may possibly have two Ventura County authored pieces of legislation. I'll keep you posted as that goes along. When you look at the state budget request, because historically, we've had issues with state budget and there's a lack of state budgeting for special requests for special projects. So what we've looked for mostly is any opportunity for grant funding on some of the bigger projects that we have here in Ventura County, ones that everyone is familiar with, that have been foremost on the board's mind. So we'll continue to look for funding where opportunities arise for those same types of funding, whether it's the Bisc or the El Rio Project or Piru or anything else big that we're working on. If we jump over to the federal side, from the state side on new bill requests, the one new bill request that you'll see, and we'll be working with both Congressman Galvally's office and Congresswoman Calh's office on this. In order for VCMC to be a county-organized health system, there's this tricky little law that says you have to have federal legislation to let a state, the state agree to make you a county-organized health system. So we're working on getting federal legislation introduced, that would be the plan, to make Ventura County Medical Center a county-organized health system. But we need federal legislation in order for that to happen in the state of California. So that's what we're.
One point, may I ask a question? Please, Madam Chair.
Please, Madam Chair. What advantages are there to that?
The advantage, and probably the folks over at the healthcare agency would be the best to answer that, but we're essentially, we're operating a county organized health system now in Ventura County. It's just legally, we're not called a county organized health system. And the way that the state has organized it, they would do a two-tier plan. You can be a county organized health system. And for our system, talking to the folks at the healthcare agency, we're best if we're operating under a county organized health system. And if you'd like more information, I'm sure I can contact Karen Davison and Mike and have them give you a more detailed description. Would you like that?
Supervisor Foy has a question.
Why does it say then we're trying to expand the number of county organizations? What do you?
Because the federal law says you may have X amount of county organized health systems in your state. So in order for us to become one, we need them to expand the number that are acceptable in California.
Is there certain counties that already are acceptable?
Yes.
They haven't?
And I think there's five of them in the state, if I recall right.
Okay.
So we need an expansion of that number.
Mr. Johnston has a comment?
Yeah, let me take a shot at it too. And I'm not necessarily, I'm not the expert, but my understanding is, is that these designations are on more of a regional basis, and unless we have an expansion, then we or others become part of some other region. And so in order to maintain as much local direction and control for our system, it's desirable for us to have that designation so that we don't become, you know, an appendage of somebody else's. It's not a matter of authorizing this. We're still in the business, it's just a question of how it's divided up on the administration and how will this redesign, you know, whether or not the local kind of public health, what they call HMO, can be run here more locally, or whether we're just part of a greater operation.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was going to say, you're right. Our phones are ringing right now.
Madam Chair.
It really is both an offensive and defensive move. So it helps us.
So that's the one new bill request that we have on your federal agenda. Now, you'll notice on, when we get to the federal budget request, there's several of them that are in black type, if you look at Attachment E, because they've been historically projects that we've been working on for a number of years. So we will still be asking for funding for those projects. We've just added a few to this year, one of them being Santa Paula Creek Storm Damage Restoration Work. That's a $4 million project that we're hoping that the Corps of Engineers gets funding for, so we can clean out a portion of the creek from the damage that was done during the 2005 floods. The second one, that Sesbee Creek, is also US Army Corps of Engineers. There's a levy that is a core levy, I might add. So we're looking for them to find some funding, a half a million dollars, so that they can evaluate their own levy. So both of those projects would come under the funding of the US Army Corps of Engineers. The Family Justice Center is a request that was put in by the DA's office, so we'll look for any type of funding we can, and that would fund and go to victims of domestic violence. Regional Fire Services Training Center was an add by the fire district, so we'll see what we can find for funding there, or the opportunities arise. And last but not least, is that crime lab microscope. And my favorite part of this whole agenda is reading the description of what that microscope is. And, you know, those folks over in the crime lab really knows, know what that means, and I'm just going to pretend like I know what it means, but it's a, we think we can find some Department of Justice funding that will help with that. It's a big savings rather than buying new equipment. So those are the new adds for the federal budget request. The general policy issue has a few new adds too, if I can just briefly tell you what those are. FEMA levy certification requirements, we're going to be under the gun with levy certifications throughout the country. And we're hoping that we can actually see specific funding for the US Army Corps of Engineers to certify their own levies. So we'll be looking for some funding that way. The Medicaid citizenship modifications, there's been several questions asked about this. There's a glitch in the federal law as far as when someone applies for Medicaid benefits and proving that they are a citizen of the United States. And some, where the glitch lies is those folks that weren't born in a hospital and possibly don't even have a birth certificate, or you have kids in the foster care system who have jumped around from family to family and facility to facility, and no one has access to their records. So we're trying to just clean up the existing language in the law. Supplemental security income is for foster youth. At this point, kids in foster care who get Title IV e-funding are technically eligible for supplemental security income as they approach 18 and age out of foster youth, but we're not allowed to help them do the paperwork to get that through federal law. So we're trying to clean up that legislation that would help us help them as they age out. And then the Elder Justice Act is something that we'll see with the federal government this year, and we'd like to see elder abuse prosecution and prevention programs be funded through this federal program. So those are the new things added to Attachment B. Now, this is where it gets a little interesting, because on Attachment C, the ads that were put on Attachment C, there's less ads than there were last year, and there are some things that were taken off, but there were 35 new additions. Those are all the blue items that are on that Attachment C. And these are the departments who provided that information. So it, I have to say, it's very helpful to have the input from the departments. So there's several new ads that are on Attachment C, and there are 19 new ads that are on Attachment D, the federal portion of this document. And, you know, actually, before I go any further, what I would like to say is, you know, this works so well when the departments and our budget analysts and legislative analysts and our legislators and our advocates in Washington and Sacramento all sit down and work together on an issue. So I would just like to thank all of the departments that contribute to this and watch me for three months get all crazy while I try and get all the information. And I really appreciate, I'd like to say, not only their input, but the several calls I make to them, to say to them, could you explain it to me one more time? Because you move from subject to subject and, you know, a little bit about a whole lot of things. So I would like to thank them for that. And you can't do a document this size without getting to the very last after it's filed and realize, oops, there's a couple of mistakes in there. So there are a couple of things that I need to have changed, and I just want your okie doke that I can do those. The first two relate to airports. One's on Attachment C, one's on Attachment D. They're essentially the same language, except one has to do with the state and one has to do with the federal government. Originally, the words "reviews done for" was not put in there, and thanks to county council, he said, you really need those words in there. So it should read, the county supports either state or federal funding for sequoia reviews done for projects at the county airports. And lastly, on Attachment C, the word conservators should take place of the word of public guardians. So that's the only changes that I know of right now. There was one item of particular that was called out, and she asked me, Supervisor Parks, asked if I would bring it up before we closed. And that is on Attachment C, page C16. It's item number 23, and that pertains to, we've had this on this document for the last couple of years, and it is exempting stormwater and flood control from Proposition 218. And Proposition 218, if you'll recall, is proposition that says you will go to the voters if you're going to raise fees for things. And to give you a little bit of background, that bill was introduced as Assembly Constitutional Amendment 13 last year, and worked its way through part of the process, had the support of CSAC and the governor's office, in part because when the levies broke in Northern California, the governor realized, he said, raise their fees. And they said, you can't raise their fees, you have to ask them first if you can raise their fees to repair these levies. So that was a way to say, how are we going to pay when we have these devastating flood events to pay for repair of these? So the reason that was put on there, that came out of CSAC and SEAC, was to exempt stormwater and flood control from the requirements of Proposition 218. Supervisor Parks asked if I'd bring that up, so if you discuss that. And I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
I have a question.
Supervisor Flynn.
On the Prop 218, what likelihood is there to get exemption for that?
Well, last year, it's been, it's been introduced twice. ACA 11 was the first time, a session ago, and then last session it was ACA 13, and it worked itself pretty well through the process. Until we, what stopped it, I believe, were all of the infrastructure bonds that were introduced, and that took steam, and everything else was left behind. So I haven't heard from CSAC yet that they'll reintroduce something like that, but I wouldn't doubt.
Who would carry that, though?
I think Harmon is who carried it last, Assemblymember Harmon, as I recall, carried it last year. And actually, it went, it was bipartisan, it was supported by both sides of the House, so interesting.
Regarding the 218 call out, that's just, right now, it require a vote of the people to increase those fees, and that's just something I wanted to call out for when we vote, because I'm going to vote separately, I think, from the rest of the board on that item.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? You're complete, you're done with your report? Supervisor Foy?
There's a lot of stuff on here.
There is.
We talked about that a little bit earlier. Does a lot of this get lost because you just can't focus on some of this stuff? I mean, we have, can I say we have too much?
It has been, I have, my challenge this year is, and my goal this year, is to sit down particularly with our lobbyists and say, we probably have a lot of repeat things on here, and there's probably a streamlined way to do this. So we've already talked about after this process to sit down and see what we have that's duplicative on there. I like to think that we, between the lobbyists and I, we do a pretty good job of recalling what's on there and what's not on there. So the best way to answer this is when something starts and it's on there, it moves really fast. So it's always helpful to have it on there when it starts full speed ahead. So some things may get lost, but I think overall, it's, we're doing, we're doing an okay job with the system.
Okay. So you think you can push these things enough? I mean, it's just, to me, when your focus is so broad, it's, you know, when you focus on something, usually you can get it done? But, I mean, you're pretty dynamic, I know, so.
Well, and what's helpful most about this is it may not be focusing particularly on an item till the item comes to the top. And then we have, then I've got the go-ahead to work the item. So that's generally what happens.
That makes good sense, yeah. Okay, great.
Mr. Johnston, did you want to comment?
I just want to reinforce what Sue just said, that when these documents start out, you have kind of something that's focused on a specific thing you want to achieve, and then some of that stuff doesn't get done, so it carries forward. And then you, after five or 10 years, you know, you kind of accumulate some barnacles. And there is the concern that maybe, you know, that there isn't enough focus. On the other hand, if this is revised every year as it is, and your board looks at it and says, yeah, we're still interested in that, this year may not be the year that that gets through, but we'll keep it on there, because every once in a while, you know, there's a, as they say, run to daylight. There's a seam, and you can move, and we don't have a board meeting, but we can immediately contact the lobbyists and say, take advantage of the opportunity. So while it is clumsy or cumbersome, it is working, but it's really important every year when we do this to take a look at these things and see if we still want to be doing them.
Supervisor Flynn.
You know, I would love to have a document that said, do no harm. And everybody understood that and acted accordingly, but that isn't how it works, as both Ms. Hughes and Mr. Johnston just said. In many respects, we have to be, cover our foundation bases for the, what, 2,400 or whatever, 1,500, I think last year they had a low count of bills that are passed at the state level, let alone the federal level. So this is, not unwieldy, it's a great, you know, you can exercise with it. But, you know, it has been years of work of, I think, having a very proactive presence with at least our delegation to give them the tools to support the priority issues that rise to the top of the platform, but also some basic things that say, you know, don't shift revenues, don't shift mandates, et cetera.
Mr. Johnston?
One other thing along the same lines, we tend to think of the list as things that we want to achieve, but there is the other side of that coin. When you determine what things you want to see happen, some of them have happened, and what it does is it tells us that if somebody tries to change that, we have the authorization to resist the change in order to preserve or protect the county's position.
Supervisor Bennett?
Very good question to ask, first time out. I would agree. I had the same feeling when I read this the first time. Who's going to get all this data? It's not so much that we go out and say we're going to make all these things happen, but they're there if we need them. If a bill comes up, we can look and go, hey, we've already have authorization. Very helpful for staff at some particular times in our lobbyists. I'd just like to call out two things, two new items that I think really are good for us, because I think the whole issue of healthcare in this country is, as we've said oftentimes here from the diocese, is broken. You know, we're trying to, we have to pay a lot of attention to it, given our role here in the county. But on C11, items 24 and 25, the county supports efforts to attain parity between mental health coverage and traditional healthcare coverage. That is in both our state and our federal platform, and I would offer, there is a push going on by others at the federal level to try to get this parity. It got lost a couple of years ago in some other issues, but it has been called forward. But it would certainly be good for Ventura County from a financial standpoint if health insurance did do an adequate job of covering mental health coverage, because many times we find people who have traditional health insurance don't get the mental health coverage, and they come into our system because the family can't afford mental health coverage, and then that's been some very expensive care for us. The second one, item 25, the county supports legislation that prevents healthcare insurance providers from discriminating against individuals with common illnesses and ailments, individuals prescribed common medications, or canceling policies of individuals if they become ill. We saw that recent story of a large insurance company was canceling policies of people that got hit with expensive illnesses. Certainly, that kind of piecemeal, picking off the winners is one of the real problems with healthcare reform here in this country, and we certainly can't have it get worse by the insurance companies themselves segregating the market and all trying to grab the winners and leaving the losers for the county and the local governments to be able to fund. So I'm happy to see those two in there and think that they're significant improvements for us. It's on C11, items 24 and 25 in the state platform, and it's D5, items 7 and 8 in the federal platform.
Part of the problem is we have a couple of different versions of this, and they have different page numbers associated with them, so.
Okay, well, I read them, so at least you have. I'm working off the one in the book, yeah.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you. Susan, you really do a great job. I don't think there's anyone in county government that has grown as much as you have in knowledge and competency in these issues. I really commend you for that.
Thank you.
It's just an amazing growth, and my congratulations to you.
Thank you.
You know, when you look at all this, though, if I were to show this list to some people in my district, they would say, John, isn't that an awful lot of government? So you do have to explain these things, and we do have to do some prioritizing ourselves and try to make things work that, say, the issue on the 18-year-old foster child who goes in out of foster program. Hopefully, by the year 17, we're working with that person with CalWorks and other programs to try to move that person into a job. That would be much better than simply going on SSI. And it would take some incentives for that to happen. So that kind of cooperation with departments needs to focus on that. Departments need to focus on the very issue you brought up and say, are there other answers to this? I think there are. The one on A4, on, I think it's HI, Kinship Guardian, I think that's a great program. It's better to see children go with their relatives than go into a, I think in most cases than go, not all, but most cases, than go into a family that may be foreign to them. So that's a good one. I wanted to talk about kind of the priorities that we use with water issues and public works issues. As you know, we had quite a discussion. As you know, we had quite a discussion either last week or the week before about Zone 2. And Zone 2 had some land that it sold, and probably, probably the basis for the issue is more, found more politically than it is legally, as far as what the board chose to do. But the property is in Zone 2, and that money could have been used anywhere in Zone 2, not necessarily just in El Rio, but anywhere. It could have been used in Fillmore and so forth. So when I, when I called the Fillmore Public Works Director, and I said to him, do you know that 5.1 million of this money went to, went to, out of the district into Zone 1? And he did not know that. And I said to him, in my opinion, that money should have remained in Zone 2. So it's, it's really a political issue. No may disagree with me more than a legal issue. So politics played a role there. If you take a look at Zone 1, and you think about the state of Mississippi, the state of Mississippi is a receiver of money. Why? Because it's very poor. Zone 1, which is the Ojai River Valley, is really the Mississippi of Ventura County as far as water projects go and projects that are paid for out of Zone 1 tax, property tax. So when you look at the priorities and see multi-agency management of the Matilah Dam ecosystem restoration project.
Could you give us a number and page number?
Yeah, I'm sorry, B-1A.
Thank you.
Man, that's, that's a huge project. And I want to remind you that I started, along with Mark Capelli, the whole Matilah project. But we've got to be somewhat reasonable here and think ahead a little bit, because the project, if you read A, it's pretty all-encompassing. And will there be any money left for the rest of the county? Because Zone 1, I remind you, is not a rich zone. It doesn't have very much money at all. So we have to be mindful of that. We have to be mindful that there are a lot of projects in Ventura County. Piru is one of them. Zone 2 money, the sale of that property, some of it could have gone to Piru, too. If we'd make the political decision that Zone 2 money, property that was bought by Zone 2 through a legal disposition of the issue, and property that was sold to River Park by Zone 2, should be money kept in Zone 2 for the use of all the zone, not, not simply El Rio. That was not an accurate painting of the picture. But I want to read to you something that I received that we need to think about very carefully. Let me read it to you. It's something I received in the mail. And it's dated November 27, 2006. And it's from the Executive Office of the President, the Office of Management and Budget, to the Honorable John P. Woodley, Jr., Assistant Secretary of the Army, Civil Works. Dear Mr. Woodley, and I'd like to read it to you, it's brief. As required by Executive Order 12322, the Office of Management and Budget has completed its review of the Army Corps of Engineers' final report of Matilah Dam Ventura County ecosystem restoration and recreation project. As you know, the administration's performance-based construction guidelines rank aquatic, excuse me, ecosystem restoration projects based on whether they cost effectively restore a nationally or regionally significant aquatic ecosystem that has been degraded by a core project or our restoration effort for which the corps is uniquely well-suited. We have concluded that this project does not rank high in relation to these criteria. The ecosystem surrounding the Matilah Dam was degraded, degraded, excuse me, by the non-federally constructed dam, not a core project. Just to add to that, the county constructed Matilah, and at the time, it was opposed by the Army Corps of Engineers. Also, while removal of this dam may have some effect on other parts of the river system, we believe that the capability to carry out this project is not unique to the core. In addition, the benefits of the Matilah Dam removal are uncertain, because as noted in your transmittal letter, the efficacy of the Bureau Reclamation Robles Dam Fish Passage has not yet been demonstrated. The Office of Management and Budget does not object to you submitting this report to the Congress. However, when you do so, please advise the Congress that the administration will give it low priority for funding. And it's signed by Richard Mertens, Deputy Associate Director, Energy, Science, and Water Division of the Office of Management and Budget. I read that. I don't know exactly what it means or what the significance of it is yet, or the impact of it. But I would say that we need to cooperate much more than we have on the use of money that we do have and have the ability to achieve if we're to do the projects at Piru, El Rio, Matilah, and all over the county of Ventura, including the eastern part of the county. So I present that to the board as something for you to think about, something that hopefully will cause us to work more closely together. The Matilah project should be completed, but it should not be completed solely at the expense of every other project in Ventura County. And I submit to you that Matilah, at this point in time, has put in jeopardy, at least for the people of El Rio, the project there. Do you realize that project has gone from 24 million within a year to $38 million? It's just an amazing jump. Mr. CEO, if we could have some kind of a look at that jump to see if it's real, I would appreciate it. Anyway, Madam Chair, thank you for letting me comment.
Did you have any comments on any of these items that you'd like to make changes, or?
No, I simply wanted to bring that out, that we need to work together on these projects and not, I don't want to repeat.
And I think there was some update that we got on email, too, about some potentials for grant funds in El Rio that we may not have had that information to.
Okay.
Are there other comments from the board? I know we have discussed about how thick this is, and I appreciate your comment that you're going to work this next year on trying to reduce some of that, remove some of the redundancies. And as I look at some of these, I do see almost pounding it into our heads, you know, some of these items. And looking at C-15, Public Works, item 4, the county supports continued efforts to streamline permitting and regulatory responsibilities. Then on to C-16, number 5, the county supports appropriate state efforts required to fund cost-effective implementation of the Endangered Species Act, Clean Water Act. Number 6, the county supports state implementation of the reauthorized Federal Endangered Species Act through regulations and procedures that enhance and protection of species and vital habitats. And it goes on to talk about why that's important. And I think it gets a little bit lengthy. The next one, we talk about the county supports encouraged state regulations and procedures for common sense implementation of the federal resource protection law. I mean, it's just, to me, this could all be put together into one item. And at this point, what I would just recommend, because it has to be flushed out more, I know, and through the staff and other supervisors, but on item 6, this whole paragraph that talks about the county recognized that overly cumbersome, costly, time-consuming administrative processes can serve the threat to species and habitat protection to diverting resources from projects to paperwork by encouraging avoidance of regulatory compliance and by unleashing a backlash against all regulation procedures, including all those that are -- I would move that, we remove that whole sentence, because to me, it's overkill.
You know those commercials you hear on the radio, and they give you the disparage?
I could, I could do that. Well, I don't, I didn't want to take up too much of your time. But, yes.
I would, I'd agree. I'd second that motion.
Thank you.
I think we have the message throughout this, do no harm. And that just, yeah, it's a little.
But I noticed also on item C-7, under Agriculture, number 5, we have this item for the state. And this says that the county supports all efforts to reduce the use of toxic pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers, and promotes programs to educate the public on pesticide use and impacts. And I would just ask that we also include that, not only on the state platform, but also on the federal platform, because that involves the EPA, too. And then also that our county has had efforts on also rodenticides, so if we can throw that in with the list of all the chemicals that are used. Yes, so that would be to my request that we add rodenticides and also include it on our federal platform, too. And I think those are all the comments. I know that one sentence that went on, and I call hammering it in a bit too much, that's also in the federal platform, so if we can just remove that same sentence, since it's the exact same one, so it'd be item number 6 on C-16 also appears on item 4, D-8. Those are my requests for changes to this. Does anyone else have some?
Sure.
Yes. Supervisor Floyd and Supervisor Flynn?
I would just have, as you look at this and you continue to do, I just don't believe we need to continue to grow government. I mean, we just get a heap adding and adding more programs. Where I come from, I don't want to see government grow. On the other side, from a county side, we know we don't always get funding for a lot of these things that continue to grow. We have to general fund money wherever else. But if you could just take that kind of view from my standpoint.
Thank you. And I also add, I would say, as the rest of the board, we all met with you, and there are some suggestions I made, and I'm glad to see them in here, that weren't called out. And one was the, looking for grant funds for the reverse 911, because that's going to be coming up, and that's going to be expensive, so we might as well look for ways to fund it. Supervisor Flynn, you had a comment, too?
Right. Mine is on B-6, Federal Agenda W, farmworker housing. It, I don't know what you have, I can't remember what you have under state on farmworker housing, if anything. I don't remember that.
Let me see if it's on here real quick.
But let me just make a comment. This is probably our, our best hope of getting money for farmworker housing would come from the state, I think. Especially, we have a friend there that maybe can help us a little bit. But farmworker housing W, supporters request for securing a $3 million from any appropriate federal agency for design, construction, and/or land acquisition for farmworker housing. As you go on, if you could become more specific with that, and if we could maybe begin to identify what development organizations, such as Cabrillo, and there are one or two others, that we should work with. Let me tell you why. I'm, I'm going to bring an issue to the board, I don't know when, on farmworker housing, and it's going to be with the use of land that the Arch Diocese owns, and it's 10 acres, and it's zoned, one for five, one unit for five acres. So if we were to put some farmworker housing there, or low-income housing, if you will, but farmworker housing especially, because of where it's located, then it's going to need some assistance. Now, we do have, we can get assistance, I'm pretty sure, from people in agriculture. In fact, I had one person commit himself to that. But it's going to take some more specifics here at the federal level, because it's always hard to find what agency. U.S. Department of Agriculture, you know, they talk a lot about it, but nothing ever comes to any great extent, at least for farmworker housing. So if you could work a little bit on that.
And it, and there is, if you look on A-2, number D, there is a statement on the, on the state side, but I'll see what our opportunities are for farmworker housing.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
That's it.
Can I have your light on, and no comment? Can I go ahead and move the approval of this legislative agenda? Yes.
And can I ask a question of county council? Do we also need, as part of that motion, those corrections that I included? Thank you.
I move the approval of the legislative agenda, including the corrections that were made, and also taking that second sentence out of C-16, number 6, in the state one, and the same second sentence out of D-8, number 4. Also adding rodenticides to C-7, number 5, and putting one for the federal platform also. And I would ask that we also pull out for a separate vote the issue on Prop. 218, because I'd like to vote against that, and that's number 22 on C-17. So this would be including all that.
So that's a new motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments on the motion? Any objections to the motion? Okay, that motion passes. And now, just on that item 218, is there a mo, that is, we're calling out, this is number 22 on page C-17, is there a motion?
I move that we approve staff's recommended language for, for that.
Okay, we have a motion?
Well, that.
Okay. Okay, this is on number 22 of page C-17. Now, I'm using the new version here with the red and the blue, but I could find it in the book for you, too. I have it both ways. In the book, okay, it's actually on the same page in both. It's C-17, it's item 22, so it works for both.
Is it, excuse me, is it 22 or 23? We're talking, in my version, it's number 23, Prop. 218?
It's 22, I guess.
I'm seeing it as 22.
So the motion is supporting.
I'm seeing it in the book as 22 also. But I'll just read what it says. The county supports legislation that would amend the California Constitution to exempt fees and charges for flood control, stormwater, and urban runoff management from Proposition 218.
So if, if I could, just because we've been talking about a lot of issues, this basically would say, we're in favor of the legislation, the bipartisan legislation that was working its way through the state legislature last year, supported also by the governor, that simply didn't get there. But it is, it came to light when the governor saw the levies in trouble, wanted to be able to increase fees so that he could do, you know, fund levies, and was told, well, you can't do that because of the Prop. 218 restriction, that you have to go to the voters. This would be an amendment to the Constitution saying, for these kinds of issues, you know, for these watershed issues, you don't need to do that. That's the, that's the legislative platform. This was our legislative platform last year also. So this was our platform last year, this would be a continuation of it. Supervisor Parks is saying she'd like to vote against that.
I think I probably did that last year, too.
I think she voted against it last year, so it's.
So you have the motion, and do I have a second on this? And we have a second. Any objections to the motion?
Under discussion.
Yes, Supervisor Flynn, discussion?
Let me ask the question now. We're talking about, say, a local project, watershed protection project, let's say, for the sake of discussion. If that met certain criteria, then it would not have to go to the vote of the people. Is that what we're saying?
If, if we had a flood event and needed repair work to be done, as I understand the way the legislation was written last year, last two sessions, if we had a flood event and we needed to raise rates in order to pay for repair of that, had that bill passed, we would not have to go to the voters first to ask their approval to raise their rates in order to do that repair.
And it doesn't, I kind of was confused the way I read it. It doesn't go beyond that, then?
No, this would be during, for, for stormwater and flood control and urban, well, you know, it depends on what the bill looks like at the very end. At the very end.
Let me ask the question more specifically. We know that, we know that eventually, we're going to, not too far off, we've got to come up with not just a little bit of money, but a lot of money in order to bring our flood control facilities up to date.
Correct.
If you look at them now, we had a report on this by Jeff some time ago, and they're simply not adequate, not large enough to handle what would come from a 100-year storm. Am I right? So with this legislation exemption to 218 applied to, to that?
Philosophically, the issue that you board, and for the record, my name's Jeff Pratt of the Watership Protection District. and I'm with the Watershed Protection District. Philosophically, the issue that your board has to wrestle with, and that they're wrestling with at the state, is whether or not flood control, stormwater management, that means water quality, urban stormwater runoff, is a benefit to all, and all should pay for it, the same way that, in the way they use it. The same way that water utilities pay, sewer utilities pay. That's the philosophical underpinning. Does flood control fit into that category? Does stormwater runoff fit into that category? The arguments for that are that everybody benefits from flood control, and you can assess to a user an amount that correlates to their benefit. There are lots of arguments against it, and I won't get into your territory, but essentially, that's the underpinnings and the discussions going on at the state level. Does that help?
Any other questions?
I just might point out, the way this is worded, we're not supporting any specific legislation. It gives a, this is our intention, and then our lobbyists sit there and say, does this bill, these are the parts of the bill that support where the county wants to go, so we're not voting on any specific.
Right, but we've gone, we've gone, I really support what we're doing. If it encompasses everything, I think it should. And that is, we did first talk about emergencies, and that's fine, there's no problem with that. But also, we do face this huge problem. And I would hope that the huge problem that we face, and that is inadequate flood control facilities, which could create a disaster. I hope that fits in there somewhere, too.
Yes.
Is that your intent?
It is. It is the intent behind the legislation and behind many committees working at that level, too.
Now, it's very difficult to vote against taking something to the people. On the other hand, if the people understand the report that you gave to us, if we can make that more public, if we can get that information out to the public, it would be much more understandable, rather than, there's the Board of Supervisors wanting to bypass the people again. We face certain big, huge problems, and we need to make sure the public understands that.
Thank you. And so this does include flood control, stormwater, and urban runoff management as being exempt from two eighteen?
And key to that is, this would be a constit, I mean, this would go to the voters. This would be another proposition to bypass the former proposition, so to speak. So this is something that the voters would have to agree to.
Good point. Supervisor Floyd?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wanted to find out who's gonna control what these costs were, but you're gonna go back to the voters with this. No problem if the voters want it, then they have the choice to make, that's great.
Yeah, to amend the state's constitution requires a vote of the people, and this is in support of amending it for that particular purpose.
Correct.
Got it. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any opposition? Seeing one, it's myself, that motion passes. And that completes our legislative agenda. Thank you for your hard work on this, and I also note you are the person that helped us get the $25 million grant for the watershed protection, and I thank you for that, too.
Thank you.
Can I ask one thing while we're on this item? Ms. Hughes, if you could ask our federal lobbyists to, at least my office, but my guess is all the supervisors would like to have the information, give us an analysis of where the federal legislation is on those two items that I asked to have added to this, which is healthcare parity between healthcare and traditional health insurance, and legislation that would restrict that. Because I'd like to know what those specific pieces of legislation are, so if we want to individually lobby for those particular things and contact our legislatures, we can. I think we have a unique opportunity with the new makeup of Congress, et cetera, for those to go forward. So could you get that for, at least my office, and I think send it to the other supervisors?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, the policy is, if you give it to one office, you give it to all, right?
Of course I do. Sheer and sheer like. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
And when do you begin the process for next year? Tomorrow, okay. And we'll go to our regular agenda now, and our first item is item thirty-eight, and this is regarding approval of our Ventura County library budget. And we did have, I think, one little revision that was given to us.
We have lunch.
Good morning, board members. I'm Alan Langville, Deputy Director of Ventura County Library. This morning, we're coming to your board for our mid-year budget revisions. These were recommended by the Library Services Commission on November thirtieth at their meeting. With me, which is trying to hide out right now, is Marta Rodriguez, our library accounting officer, who will be able to help with answering questions that you might have this morning.
Thank you. And this is item thirty-eight. And could you just reiterate for us the correction that was made on item thirty-eight?
Yes, in the library's MOU, nineteen ninety-eight MOU, this particular item is called capital reserve, excuse me, but in the county's budget book, these items are called alteration and improvement. So there is a conflict in what something is called here, and that's why this occurred.
Okay, since what we call it. Are there any questions, or is there a motion on item thirty-eight? Carol Dean Williams, thank you for reminding me. You have one minute, one minute and seventeen seconds.
It's time for a poll.
Yes.
Carol Dean Williams, I guess I made my point. Where's Ms. Griffith? She's absent. I've been trying to get a hold of her for over a week through phone, email, non-responsive.
Write a poem.
Huh?
Write a poem.
Write a poem. I think I'll do that. Here's a printout of where she came from. The Berkeley Library is what the CEO's office told me is where she came from. And they have a library director and an office manager. He's the assistant. She makes a hundred and forty thousand a year with three thousand dollars a month expenses. Mr. Floyd, now, this is a focus. They have a budget of ten million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, with direct cost of two million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. You have an absent head of this department. I've offered to retire, Mr. Floyd. We have the Ventura Starfree Press microfilms of the articles for twelve years, printing not libel against me, and I've asked them, why are they in the library? It costs thirty-eight hundred dollars a year to maintain these microfilms that people put newspaper under bird cages, and they're here on microfilm in our library. I've offered to retire with a simple solution, with no focus, no response, Mr. Floyd, and it was a breath of fresh air to see you focused this morning. And I ask those hard questions, too, but I'm not a supervisor, so people don't answer. And you'll find out that they'll quit answering you in a few more months. So, you know, this board, let's.
Oh, my gosh, you've gone over thirty-seven seconds.
Oh, can I sum up?
I think, because you went over almost a minute.
Oh, I didn't know.
If that's not, thank you, thank you for your comments. And we do have a motion on this, or can we put it back on the table? We have a motion, is there a second? And we have a second. Are there any objections? Seeing none, then that passes. And I was just reminded that we didn't do item eleven yet, and that was regarding the appointments to boards and commissions. And I'd like to thank the supervisors for getting back to me with their requests for what boards and commissions they'd like to be on. And while I was at it, I found that we could remove a couple of those commissions and boards from our list, because they don't exist anymore and other reasons, and then also added a couple that weren't on there. So it's an updated list. We've added both Vista Committees, the one oh one and Vista one twenty-six, one oh one I serve on, and Vista one twenty-six Supervisor Long serves on, so we just continued that to have a serving on it, but also to show it. The ones that were removed are the Simi Valley Civic Center Authority, it no longer exists, the Juvenile Detention Facility Steering Committee, because the need for the committee is no longer necessary, and talked with Alec Pringle about that, as well as the Cano Coalition for Youth and Families, because we have yet to enter into a joint powers agreement with that committee, and once we do, we can put it back on if need be. So at this point, if there are any comments or questions, yes, Supervisor Flynn?
I'm not sure what the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council does.
This one remains and has been in place. Oh, because you're going to be appointed to it.
I'm certainly not up to speed on what, what is it? What does it do?
Our chief probation officer and our juvenile justice judge co-chair that body, it is required under many of the grants that we receive for programs and services to juveniles. And it is made up of probably about thirty-five folks who participate from all, both the private sector nonprofits and others, and basically just working on programs and services for juvenile.
Thank you. And I do appreciate Supervisor Flynn has been added to that committee. I believe Supervisor Michaels was on it previously. Supervisor Floyd, did you have a comment?
It was, it was good to hear that some of the other people didn't understand, but some of those did either. As you're looking at those, there's a lot of interesting stuff. Now, I know Supervisor Long, you said some of those required, that we had that one was required. Are all these required? Or these are sometimes?
No, I don't think all of them are required. For example, the Association of Water Agencies, this is a group of individuals that the county participates, both with our staff and a supervisor attends those. But some of these are not required by law, but that we participate in for the work that they do. The, I don't think Beacon, for example, the Beach Erosion Authority is required, but it, you know, they do accomplish things and need our participation.
Right, and I just look at that as an opportunity to, I mean, we do need to be involved, though. Also, look at, are we, you know, is somebody new coming in, just looking, examining things, fresh set of eyes, as our CEO has said, and then what is the cost in, to do that, to the staff? And I know there's a lot of other committees out there and a lot of other appointments that we make, and one of the things I was looking at is, what are we accomplishing with it? And hopefully, we're accomplishing good things, I'm sure we are. But I think it's also time that we can take a look at some of these things, and so.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, whereas some of these already exist out there, and the board member does participate. I agree with you that there are some committees that we should look at again to see if they are achieving the goals that they originally authorized to do, and maybe they're not as necessary. Supervisor Flynn?
Right, as I understand it, you'll be serving on the retirement board, and I really think the choice is a good one, because of your experience. We need, we need people that have the background that you have to serve on that, so I commend that to you. It's an interesting board, with investments on one hand, investment policies, development, and the other hand, ruling on some job-related retirements, which can become thorny. But I served on there twenty years. It's a, it's a, it's an extremely important one to serve on.
Is there a motion regarding the, we do have a motion and a second. Seeing objection, that passes. And again, I thank everyone for getting back to me, and there was some redistribution there. I'm now going to be doing SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, so I get to go to downtown L.A. All right. You go to Sacramento, okay. But you can fly out of Burbank. Our next item is with our auditor controller, it's item thirty-nine, I believe this one's also been revised, too. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Chairman Parks, members of the board, Mr. CEO. Yes, there were some revisions to some of the contract pages, they were not very material changes, where we had deleted a reference that was not needed, and failed to delete that all the way through. This is requesting your board's approval to contract with CGI Technologies for the fit gap analysis, or the envisioned phase, of our countywide financial system. This phase is specifically to look at where the system is today, it's the same outfit vendor that supports our current system, and their new version that came out a few years ago, and how do we get from where we are to where we should be. It will also help determine the cost of the upgrade, because we have some choices to make on which modules we might want to pursue for cost accounting, for fixed asset inventory, and grant management, and some of these other modules that, some of them we did purchase and didn't really utilize. The existing system that we have was implemented in nineteen ninety-seven, so it's ten years old. It's time to upgrade, and this will help us create a roadmap, so to speak, of where we are now and where we want to be on the system. We're asking your board's approval for the contract, as well as five fixed-term positions to assist the department in moving forward with this project, to look at the business process, to decide whether we need to re-engineer those processes, or whether we should change the system to work better for us. I have heard from R.C.I.O. this morning, he's not able to be here, but he has sent Mr. Reed to be with us. If you have any questions, I also have staff here to answer any questions you might have.
Does the board have any questions? Supervisor Floyd?
Go ahead.
This, this system that you're talking about, this financial management, is this, besides this, what, eight years old, nine years old, ten years the current one you have, is this going to also be a much more efficient system for us?
Absolutely. It has technologically improved, as far as the platform that it runs on. It will mean less servicing by my staff to each individual department on the hookups and connections, and it's going to be more robust in some of the areas that we need to pay more attention to.
Okay. And will it help them, in the sense, be more efficient, in the sense, as our county grows, the workload grows that you have, that they'll be able to do this? I mean, and I'm.
That's the goal. We do seem to find pretzels that we create ourselves.
I'm sure it has better reporting and everything else that you're looking for. One of the things that, I mean, as you do, we've done over, myself, over the years in the business community, is every time you upgrade, there is a new training time for this, right?
Yes.
And you've asked for some more positions. In that time of training, we slow down a little bit during that training time, do we, is that all taken into account with these positions you're asking for?
There's never a slowdown. But the training would be in the second phase. This phase is to assist in identifying where those changes would occur, and where we can better service the departments. When the phase two implementation comes on board, that's where the training will take place.
Right, yeah.
And we would request for the existing positions to help train the trainers in the departments.
I understand that, I just want to make sure we look at the whole piece. Sometimes we look at a little bit, and it sounds good here, and all of a sudden, we forget what it's gonna cost us to take it.
We continue training on the nineteen ninety-seven version continually now.
Okay, great, thanks.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd just like to ask, you gave us some documents that are on our diocese or?
That's part of the contract.
Yeah, the contract changes. And I'm just trying to make sure, trying to do due diligence, always tight here at the last minute, in trying to compare this with the other ones, is it, is it, is it changes essentially, where I noticed, like it said, it said exhibit B, and now it says exhibit D?
Yes.
In each one of these, was it just a reference to the wrong exhibit?
One exhibit was removed on the advice of purchasing. We were told we didn't need to have it included in the packet, and by doing so, everything shifted. We didn't catch all of those references to the shift in the schedule.
So the modifications here that we're getting at the last minute are simply those changes?
That's the primary, yes.
That's what I, that's what I needed to know with that, right? Okay, okay, because there is some, is there some time sensitivity in terms of this thing moving?
We'd like to move forward. We are dependent on the vendor's staffing allocation to help us.
Okay, thank you.
We had an item, was it the last meeting, adding staff?
That was the budget modification to support this contract.
Okay, so that, that added staff to support this, which also adds staff, or is it the same staff?
No, that was the funding to support this staff.
Thank you. I knew that they must be related, otherwise you'd really be busy having to do it twice. Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any opposition? Seeing none, then it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, and hopefully that will help you better to allocate staff and resources and increase efficiencies. Our next item, then, is item forty, and this is from the CEO's office regarding approval to appoint a public member to the retirement association. And would you like to take this, Mr. Johnson?
Bill's been on the board for some time. He's one of the real, you know, the institutional memory, and he also well represents the community as a non-recipient or beneficiary of the plan, so he's an outstanding person, and we greatly appreciate his willingness to serve again.
Quite a bit of meaning what you're saying there.
The what?
A lot of meaning to what you're saying.
Yeah.
Between the lines and.
Right.
A lot of meaning to what you're saying, between the lines, move the appointment.
Motion, second, no objections, then that passes, we'll move on to our policy matters, item forty-one, recommendation by Supervisor Bennett?
We have an opening on the Mobile Home Review Board, and I'd like to recommend Anthony Strauss, the appointment tonight.
We have a second?
Second.
Seeing no objections, Supervisor Flynn?
The appointments come from districts, right?
No, no, they don't, from the Review Board, it's been open.
Okay, Ken, were we informed that this was open, all of us?
Yes, everybody's been informed, it's been open for quite some time.
Okay, I have no objection to Anthony Strauss, but I just wondered about that.
It's been three or four months.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, seeing no objection, that passes then, Mr. Johnston?
Just to make a comment, Tony Strauss was a former county employee, member of the County Council's office, like Mr. Greenberg, it's really nice to see our former employees are still making a contribution to public service, and the quality of the people that come out of our County Council's office.
Now you know you didn't have to pay them. Our next item on the agenda is item forty-two, this is one I'm bringing forward, and this would be to adopt an ordinance which would repeal an existing ordinance, forty-two thirty-two, section seventy-two fifty-one of the Ventura County Ordinance Code, and enacting a new section, seventy-two fifty-one, regulating parking oversized vehicles in the Oak Park Community. This was continued from our last meeting, because it did have an item in there that had been added to have appeals when there are problems with the municipal advisory council's permitting of oversized vehicles to come right to the Board of Supervisors, and I removed that portion to it. Thank you, so at this point, I would ask that we go ahead and read in title only, and wait for the reading, Ms. Rodriguez?
Is there a second?
Oh, yes, there's a second.
An ordinance of Ventura County Board of Supervisors regulating parking and storing of oversized vehicles in the Oak Park Community.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, seeing no objections, then that passes, and now item forty-three, and this one was changed to just be Ronald Peterson to the Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee, and I'll bring forward Thomas Rich, February sixth, so, thank you, seeing no objection then, Mr. Peterson has a great deal of experience in this, so I think we'll be pleased, that motion passes unanimously, and our item forty-four, Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, I'm going to raise my staff to come up, I have a PowerPoint that I will provide you, the background of this project, it's been a long time coming, but since I've got my first tenure, my staff are already on team members of that, and the PowerPoint that I'm providing, we have been overview of this project, and I really think this room would probably be filled with folks, but they're all out there doing good work, the Economic Development Collaborative has partnered with this, and VSCDA, and Nancy Myerson and Associates, and Chris Meisner, Filtration, et cetera, this goes back even beyond an old board letter I found that was signed by Susan Lacy, and Steve Offerman was involved with this back in the mid-nineties, it goes even beyond that, because Mr. Johnson said to me that when he was in the GSA Department, he said, "Look at that shadow box," and what a disgrace it had become, so what we undertook was to really look at how to put together a better face for Ventura County at our state Capitol, in the display box, it's called a shadow box, it is overseen by GSA at the state, just in the sense of, you know, they assist us with getting access to the box and providing electricity, but that's it, and during the electricity crisis, they actually cut the electricity off, so, and because we had a display that rotated, had an image that rotated, it stopped rotating, and it also became faded, and it's just pretty darn ugly. So unfortunately, my name got attached to a piece of paper, and I received a Dunning letter from the State of California Department of General Services about this display box, so, yeah, I guess, so anyways, you can see, if you move ahead to the next item, this is the embarrassingly current display box we have, and if you've been up there, you know there are fifty-eight counties, they all really do take pride in trying to keep a wonderful display for the face of their county, and this one just to stop being that. Examples of others, you see Solano and Sutter, and they don't, it really doesn't, that doesn't really show you how creative some of them have become, and outstanding, and probably if they gave money or had an award program, we'd all rush to do and keep these up to speed, but they don't, they beam the state. So, the history on this is, again, we went, and in the letter briefly talks about going to the Community College District, and saying, you know, Ralph Fernandez Architect and Design Group, let's have a competition with your students, and boy, they rose to the challenge, and they created this wonderful, kind of a window box, three-standing free display with pictures of the county, and we took it out, and everybody nodded their heads and said, "This is wonderful, this is wonderful," and then we said, "Okay, now how do we get it produced and installed, and what pictures to use?" So then I took it, the next step, to take it back to the collaborative, to say that we could identify some dollars in our special accounts and contributions, but we needed to have the private sector participate with us, and we needed them to also buy into the design, because it isn't just county government's display, it is our county of Ventura region display. So, they stepped forward, the collaborative did, with Nancy Myerson, who is a member of the collaborative, and Chris Meisner, who's the now outgoing chair of the collaborative, who said he would match the dollars, Meisner Filtration, and we talked to Tim Huff, who is a well-known photographer in our county, who's done many books on our county, and he agreed to work with us on some pictures that would show the lifestyle in our county, shows all ten cities, with some picture shows certainly agricultural being very prominent, what you're seeing here is what I just informed you, and the verbiage that's on the display will be much more legible than what you're seeing up there, so as a visitor, standing in front of the shadow box, you'll be able to see that it depicts our county very well, both in pictures and in verse, and the right panel will focus on the local economy, the agriculture, bi-tech industries, along with the Puerto Guanimi and the naval base, the middle section is the history of our county, early economy, natural attractions, museums, cultural center, the first panel is the map of the cities, et cetera, so I think both the board of the collaborative was very pleased with the end product, which we frankly just have paper-wise and with a PowerPoint, we did not spend money to do a mock prototype of it, we know what the dimensions of the shadow box are, GSA has stepped forward to agree to identify contractor who does this up in Sacramento, these shadow boxes, and will put it together and install it for us, well, for a fee, of course, and that's our next step, is to really now just get this done and get it off my desk, and I would propose, in the recommended action, that we agree with the work that's been done, obviously we agree with the matching funds, we obviously will also thank considerably to all of the partners from the collaborative and Mr. Meisner for their contribution, and also that from here forward, that General Services Agency to oversee the shadow box, so they need to stay on top of this, and the question was asked, well, how long will this last, and I'll say, it doesn't have moving parts, the pictures aren't dated, it should last as long as, you know, unless we get bored with it and wish to change some pictures, we really tried to not put pictures in there that would become dated, so that's as much as I can share with you on answering those questions, but I can assure you, we will stay up there and we will pay attention to it, so I don't get a Dunning letter.
We have Supervisor Flynn, did you have something?
Right, it's, I'm glad you brought it up, because I really got tired of looking at it myself, as I recall, it was done like twenty-six years ago, or something like that, and VSCDA, I think, did it, I'm not going to criticize it at this point, because it's seen its day about fifteen years ago, but I'm happy that you brought it up, and I moved that we adopted.
Okay, and we have some more comments Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, I would just, I'd just like to emphasize to all of us, this is just a classic example of the role that Supervisor Long has played on this board, you have, you do that yeoman's work with all those CSAC meetings, and that state, kind of, you're our state contact, and so it's very appropriate that, probably, that you got the letter, right? But it's also an example, I mean, and then you just picked up the ball, and you just sat down, and you and your staff got the work done, so I just want to commend you, quite frankly, you know, this thing's been this bad for this long, and everybody's gone and seen it and said they didn't like it, but nobody did anything about it, and you did, I'd also hope that you can certainly pass on the board's appreciation to Meisner Filtration and Chris Meisner, it makes it a lot easier to do this with some public funds if we're matched with fifty percent private funds and stuff, so, anyway, my commendation for it to you.
Thank you. Supervisor Foy?
Yeah, it's funny, because I was up at the Governor's Swearing Inn, and my wife and I were walking through, and she was, "Let's go and look up Ventura County's box," she has looked at me, she's, "This needs work," man, so I do appreciate you going through with this, it's great, no question, and I do, it's great to get some private funds, I was just curious, I mean, I would think that people in this county would want to do it, I mean, I know it's great, your CEOs, I was putting some in, but it would be even greater if we'd get some more and not have to put any money, and they would just say, "It's our county, we want to do some," I don't know if we ever went out to them, it's great you had a relationship, it sounds like, but, and these kind of things.
We did go out to them, and the issue is that GSA at the state actually has even limits on what you can advertise of yourself, so we couldn't do a supporter box there, or even a corner that said, you know, compliments of, or supportive, so even that had its limitations to really try to do like thousand-dollar sponsorship, something like that, so it was really the good graces of Chris Meisner, just popped down ten thousand dollars.
Well, that's great, I'm glad you were able to do it.
Pretty incredible.
It needed work, no question.
Thank you, so also look at the kind of pictures that you're going to be using, photos, and I like the idea that we're really going to try and do the county as a whole and have it equitably balanced, I see where one of the items is county's natural attractions, and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy has a lot of nice photos of Almondson Ranch, just as a photographer out there, Tom Gamache has some nice photos too, that we might include that for the East County, because I think that's a pretty amazing achievement, thank you.
We'll take a look.
So Supervisor Flynn made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second, and seeing no objections, that passes, and I echo Supervisor Bennett's comments too, thank you for pushing this forward.
When we get an installation date, I'll let you all know, and I don't know what kind of a ceremony we'll have for the unveiling, but there'll be something, I'm sure, thank you.
Next CSAC meeting.
Thank you, Stan, appreciate it.
Next item is Supervisor Flynn's, this is item forty-five.
Yeah, I move the recommended action, she will serve very well on the mental health board.
Motion a second, seeing no objections, that passes, and the mental health board is going to be having a joint meeting with the Alcohol, Drug and Advisory Board, something I've been pushing, so we can get some more attention to dual diagnosis, and maybe get a subcommittee on the mental health board on that, I think so too. Our next item is forty-six, from the Sheriff's Department, and that's our last item, and this is an MOU at the County Superior Court for court security, we have a motion and a second, seeing no objections, that passes, now we have our correspondence agenda.
Second.
Motion a second on that, and that passes, and I think at this point, then, we're going to go into closed session, County Council, do you anticipate an announcement?
No.
No, okay, then we will go from our closed session to adjournment, and see you all in two weeks.